Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd ask you if you could please rise as the Wilmington Minutemen present the American flag. And ladies and gentlemen, if you could join me in the pledge of allegiance and afterwards, please remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And ladies and gentlemen, if you could join me for a moment of silence, for those men and women who have given their lives serving this great nation in our armed forces, and for the hope that those pursuing the missions of our nation abroad will return home soon and safely. And for all those that have passed away in the past year, especially those that have served this town and our nation, namely Harvey Adams, Joe Balistreri, Jane Burns, Shirley Forrest Callan, Marjorie Castellano, Francis Crispoe, Roscoe Denault, Merle Eastman Jr., George Gates, Charles Gilbert, Paul Goulet, David Landers, Kyle Massey, David McHugh Sr., Philip Merriam, Mary Mogan, David Noel Jr., Joseph Steen, Robert Vasallo Sr., Daniel Wondell Sr., Lottie Weisberg, and Dorothy Wyberg. Thank you. And if you could remain standing as the Minutemen place the American flag and exit the auditorium. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we thank the Wilmington Minutemen for their participation once again at our annual town meeting. Thank you. And please be seated. Good morning. A few things before we get started with the warrant. First, I'd ask that you turn off or put on vibrate any cell phones or electronic devices that you may have. Everyone should have this purple booklet, and you should have a purple single sheet that goes with the transfer article. So you should have a purple booklet and a purple single sheet. If you don't, they can be found in the foyer area. Articles 1 through 16 will be taken up in order as part of the budget process. Articles 17 through 36 will be drawn randomly. Article 32 involves a request to sell town-owned land. This parcel was deemed to be not surplus by the town manager, so Article 32 will be passed over. If you wish to speak, I'd ask that you please go to the microphones. All motions, amendments having to do with expenditures of money or amendments to a bylaw must be presented in writing. Those are Articles 3 through 16, 18, 22, 23, 24, 29, 30, 31, and 36. Non-voters should be in the non-voter section up the back of the gymnasium. If you have a question, please, please ask. I would like to thank WCTV for their participation again this year in bringing this to the residents of the town of Wilmington. I'd like to thank our Artellas, one of which Artellas will not only be counting votes this afternoon, but is counting the days to her retirement as an employee of the town of Wilmington. And I would like to congratulate her on her upcoming retirement, Mrs. Phyllis Viera. Refreshments are served in the foyer area by strings attached, and I'll let you know when pizza has arrived. And most importantly, I have always stated that we will deal with each other respectfully. I want to be perfectly clear on what this means. Discussion will be specific to the article before us. On the budget, discussion will pertain to the budget item and the expenditure only and will not go into the operation of the departments. Any discussion outside these parameters will be ruled out of order. There will be no personal or character attacks, questions on individuals' qualifications, or disrespectful commentary. Violation of this will result in immediate removal from this meeting. This is what I call the rules of civility, and I will enforce them strictly. And although she won't be, she tallies our votes in total, I wanted to also congratulate an upcoming retiree of the town of Wilmington, the Assistant Town Clerk Carolyn Kenny. Questions before we start? Great. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in the manner prescribed in the bylaws of said town, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town qualified to vote in town affairs to meet and assemble at the Boutwell School, Wywood School, and the Town Hall Auditorium Saturday, the 23rd day of April, 2011, at 7:45 o'clock and the forenoon. The polls to be open at 8:00 a.m. and shall be closed at 8:00 p.m. for the election of town officers. Mr. Samaglia.
I move that the moderator dispense with further reading of the warrant and take up and make reference to each article by number.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article 1, to bring in your votes on one ballot respectively for the following named offices to wit. Two selectmen for the term of three years, two members of the school committee for the term of three years, one member of the housing authority for the term of five years, and one member of the redevelopment authority for the term of five years. You're also hereby further required and directed to notify and warn the said inhabitants of the town of Wilmington who are qualified to vote on elections and town affairs therein to assemble subsequently and meet in the town meeting at the high school gymnasium, Church Street, in said town of Wilmington on Saturday, the 30th day of April, 2011, at 10:30 a.m., then and there to act on the following articles. Ladies and gentlemen, it's customary and my pleasure to introduce to you the individuals that you elected at last Saturday's town election. First, to the redevelopment authority, Mr. Patrick Kogan. To the Wilmington Housing Authority, Mr. Gregory Bendel. To the Wilmington School Committee, Ms. Leslie Quick. And to the Wilmington School Committee, Virginia Barnish. To the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, Mr. Michael McCoy. And to the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, Ms. Judith O'Connell. I'd like to thank all that participated in last week's election, and also like to specifically thank those individuals that served the town in those offices previously, namely Mr. Raymond Lapore, Mr. Stephen Higgins, and Mr. John Gogan. Article number 2, to hear reports of committees and act thereon. Mr. Kira.
Mr. Moderator, I move to take no action.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of previous years or taking any other action related thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Kira.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the article not be adopted.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article number 4, to see if the town will vote to authorize a treasurer-collector with the approval of the selectmen to enter into any agreement under the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws with one or more banks doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during fiscal year 2012 for a term not to exceed three years, which will permit the town of Wilmington to maintain funds on deposit with such institutions in return for said institutions providing banking services or taking any other action related thereto. Mr. Samaglia.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the treasurer-collector with the approval of the selectmen be hereby authorized to enter into agreement under the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws with one or more banks doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during fiscal year 2012 and for a term not to exceed three years, which will permit the town of Wilmington to maintain funds on deposit with such institutions to return for said institutions providing banking services.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article number 5, to see how much money the town of Wilmington, the town will appropriate for the expenses of the town and the salaries of several town offices and departments and determine how the same shall be raised, whether by taxation, transfer from available funds or otherwise, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the several respective sums as recommended or presented by the Finance Committee be raised from the fiscal year 12 tax levy and other general revenues of the town or by transfer from available funds as may be recommended by the Finance Committee and be appropriated for the purpose set forth in Article number 5. Each budget category, including general government, public safety, public works, community development, public buildings, human services, Wilmington School Department, Shawshin Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School District, maturing debt and interest, unclassified reserve, and statutory charges to be taken up and voted on in the order they appear, subject to amendment, and each budget category not be open for reconsideration until the entire budget is voted.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Ladies and gentlemen, just to draw your attention to Mr. Doherty's motion, what he is proposing is that we vote on, if you look at your booklet, page 3, Finance Committee Recommends column. We would take up general government as one vote and vote on page 4, the amount of $1,917,459, and then take up public safety, public works, community development, public buildings, human services, maturing debt and interest, unclassified reserves, statutory charges, and the two school departments, Wilmington and Shawshin Regional Vocational. Just to make you aware of the change, historically, we have gone meticulously line by line. What the chairman is proposing is we take them up in a broader classification and vote them by category. Still have opportunity to discuss anything within those categories, but that is what the difference is between what he is proposing and what we have historically done. Okay? Questions? Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. So we're on page 3, ladies and gentlemen. Finance Committee recommends column, general government, which continues to page 4, the amount of $1,917,459. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on public safety, page 4, which continues to page 5. Total public safety, $8,021,919. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on public works, on page 5, which continues to page 6. Mr. Doherty.
I move that the sum of $5,823,876 be appropriated for the Department of Public Works, and to meet this appropriation, $20,000 be transferred from the sale of cemetery lots accounts, and the sum of $20,000 be transferred from the interest cemetery trust funds, and both amounts be applied to the line item Personal Services Cemetery full-time and that the balance of $5,783,876 be raised from the fiscal year 12 tax levy and any other general revenues of the town.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. So it's $5,823,876, of which $40,000 comes from available funds, raising $5,783,876 from taxation. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Community development, on page 6. Total community development, $737,728. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Public buildings, $4,291,508. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Human services, on page 7. Total human services, $1,736,364. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Wilmington School Department, $31,467,500. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Shawshin Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School District, $3,252,000. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. On pages 8 and 9, you can see some of the detail of the Wilmington School Department budget. We vote their budget obviously as a bottom-line number. We're now on page 10. Maturing debt and interest, $624,666. Mr. Doherty.
I move that the sum of $624,666 be appropriated for maturing debt and interest, and to meet this appropriation, the sum of $163,160 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the line item Maturing Debt and Interest Water, and that the sum of $2,000 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the line item Maturing Debt and Interest Authorization Fees and Miscellaneous Debt, and that the balance of $459,506 be raised from the fiscal year 12 tax levy and any other general revenues of the town.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The amount is $624,666, of which $165,160 comes from available funds, leaving the balance of $459,506 from the tax levy. Discussion. Sir.
Excuse me. My name is Jim Burnham from 406 Woburn Street. Just a question on the maturing debt. I see a huge drop in the amount allocated for the public safety building. Does this indicate that the public safety building is about to be paid off?
Mr. Kira.
Yes. As a matter of fact, you see a major decrease in the entire debt from 2011 to 2012, because as we've been saying, our last year for payment of that long-term debt associated with the middle school and the public safety building is completed in 2011.
So my follow-up question to that is, since there was, I believe we voted to increase our taxes to pay for the public safety building initially, does this indicate, now that this is paid off, that the tax levy would decrease as a result? Because I know there was an override to pay for the public safety.
It was actually a debt exclusion. It wasn't an override, but that, the money attributed to that will not have to be raised. You may have other funds that would offset that from other areas, like the typical 2.5% increase, but it could very well be that next year you may not see any appreciable or any increase in taxes. I can't predict that at this point, but I can tell you that the monies that were related to those two projects no longer have to be raised. At the same time, we also are not receiving over $2 million a year from the state for the reimbursement for the school project.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote on maturing debt and interest, $624,666, of which $165,160 comes from available funds. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Unclassified and reserve, $11,224,340. Mr. Doherty.
I move that the sum of $11,224,340 be appropriated for the unclassified and reserve, of which the sum of $85,995 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve insurance account, and that the sum of $268,634 be transferred from water department available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve employee life and health insurance account, and that the sum of $22,533 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve Medicare employees contribution account, and that the remaining of $10,847,178 be raised from the fiscal year 12 tax levy and any other general revenues of the town.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Unclassified and reserve, $11,224,340, of which $377,162 comes from available funds. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Statutory charges, $7,812,695. Mr. Doherty.
I move that the sum of $7,812,695 be appropriated for the statutory charges of the sum, be appropriated for the statutory charges of which the sum of $367,588 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the statutory charges Retirement Contributions Account, and that the remaining balance of $7,445,107 be raised from the fiscal year 12 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The amount is $7,812,695, of which $367,588 comes from available funds. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We are now on Article 6, on page 12. That was a record. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purchase of new and/or replacement capital equipment, including but not limited to the following items, and further to authorize the sale, trade, and conveyance or other disposition of any equipment being so replaced, such funds to be spent by the town department so indicated with the approval of the town manager and to the extent set forth in Chapter 592 of the Acts of 1950, the Board of Selectmen as follows." And it's, we will take these up individually as individual votes, ladies and gentlemen. So first one will be the police department, purchase of five replacement police cruisers. Is there a motion? Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $150,000 be raised and appropriated from the FY 2012 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of five replacement police cruisers for the police department, and further, the sale, trade, or other disposition of any of said replaced vehicles is hereby authorized.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The amount is $150,000 for five police cruisers. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Fire department, purchase of one rapid-response vehicle. Mr. Newhouse.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $220,000 be raised and appropriated from the FY 12 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of one rapid-response vehicle for the fire department.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The amount is $220,000 for the purchase of one rapid-response vehicle. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Public Buildings Department, purchase of two cargo vans. Mr. Shampoo.
I move that $42,000 be raised and appropriated from the fiscal 12 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of two cargo van trucks for the Public Buildings Department, and further, the sale, trade-in, or other disposition, if any, of said replaced vehicles is hereby authorized.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The amount is $42,000 for the purchase of two cargo vans. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Department of Public Works, purchase of one replacement three-quarter-ton pickup truck with cap and plow, one replacement skid-stair loader, and one replacement heavy-duty catch- base and cleaner truck. All vehicles to be assigned to the Highway Department. Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $239,950 be raised and appropriated from the FY 2012 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purpose of one replacement three-quarter-ton pickup truck with cap and plow, one replacement skid-stair loader, and one replacement heavy-duty catch-base and cleaner truck for the Department of Public Works, and further, the sale, trade-in, or other disposition, if any, of said replaced vehicles is hereby authorized.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The amount is $239,950 for the three vehicles. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Department of Elderly Services, purchase of one replacement wheelchair-accessible transport van. Is there a motion? Mr. Samaglia.
I move that $60,525 be raised and appropriated from FY 2012 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of one replacement wheelchair-accessible transport van for the Department of Elderly Services, and further, the sale, trade-in, or other disposition, if any, of said replaced vehicle is hereby authorized.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The amount is $60,525. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. School Department, purchase of one replacement wheelchair-accessible minivan. Motion, Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $47,000 be raised and appropriated from the FY 2012 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of one replacement wheelchair-accessible minivan for the school department, and further, the sale, trade, or any other disposition, if any, of said replaced vehicles is hereby authorized.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The amount is $47,000. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article 7, ladies and gentlemen. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the replacement of approximately 2,545 square feet of roof area at the Wywood Early Childhood Center, 5,260 square feet of roof area at the Public Buildings Department Headquarters, and 9,652 square feet of roof area at the Public Works Department Headquarters. Such funds to be spent by the Public Buildings Department with the approval of the town manager or taking any other action related thereto." Mr. Newhouse.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $336,000 be raised and appropriated from the FY 12 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the replacement of approximately 2,545 square feet of roof area at the Wywood Early Childhood Center, 5,260 square feet of roof area at the Public Buildings Department Headquarters, and 9,652 square feet of the roof area at the Public Works Department Headquarters.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. All of the first 16 articles, ladies and gentlemen, are recommended by the Finance Committee, so you understand that they're recommending, they're approving recommendation of all of those articles. Okay? So the amount is $336,000. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article number 8, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purchase and installation of an upgraded fire alarm system at the North Intermediate School and at the Woburn Street School or take any other action related thereto." Mr. Shampoo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $310,000 be raised and appropriated from fiscal year 12 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase and installation of an upgraded fire alarm system at the North Intermediate School and at the Woburn Street School.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The amount is $310,000. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article number 9, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purchase and installation of one high-energy-efficient forced hot air furnace at the Boutwell Early Childhood Center or take any other action related thereto." Is there a motion? Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $85,000 be raised and appropriated from the FY 2012 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase and installation of one high-energy-efficient forced hot air furnace at the Boutwell Early Childhood Center.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. The amount is $85,000. Discussion. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Those opposed say no, voted. Article number ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to replace windows and doors at the Wilmington Memorial Library, or take any other action related there too, Mr. Samaglia.
Mr. Moderator, I move that seventy-five thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY two thousand and twelve tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purchase and installation of replacement windows and doors at the Wilmington Memorial Library.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, the amount is seventy-five thousand dollars, ladies and gentlemen, discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, voted. We're on Article number eleven, to see, to see what sum the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from any available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to make improvements to school and recreation play areas, including the replacement of fencing at the Woburn Street School tennis courts, the replacement of fencing and the resurfacing of the tennis and basketball courts located across from the Beltwell School, and the repair of play structures and other maintenance improvements to the Justin A. O'Neill Memorial Skate Park located on the grounds of the Shawshin School, or take any other action related there too, Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that ninety-four thousand, seven hundred dollars be raised and appropriated from the fiscal year two thousand and twelve tax levy and other general revenues of the town, to be spent by the town manager to make improvements to school and recreational play areas at the Woburn Street School tennis courts and at the tennis and basketball courts located across the Beltwell School, and at the Justin Andrew O'Neill Memorial Skate Park located on the grounds of the Shawshin School.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, the amount is ninety-four thousand dollars, discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, voted. We're on Article number twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to undertake various improvements and repairs to municipal and school facilities, including but not limited to addressing energy efficiencies, plant operations, mechanical systems, structural issues, and code compliance, such funds to be spent by the Public Buildings Department with the approval of the town manager, or take any other action related there too, Mr. Newhouse.
Mr. Moderator, I move that one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY twelve tax levy and other general revenues of the town, to be spent by the town manager to undertake various improvements and repairs to municipal and school facilities, including but not limited to addressing energy efficiencies, plant operations, mechanical systems, structural issues, and code compliance.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, the amount is one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, voted. We're on Article number thirteen, this is the one-page purple handout, ladies and gentlemen, you should have that one-pager. So Article thirteen, to see what sum the town will vote to transfer into various line items of the fiscal year two thousand and eleven budget, from other line items of said budget, and from other available funds, or take any other action related there too, Mr. Kira.
Mr. Moderator, I move that six hundred and twelve thousand dollars be transferred from the following fiscal year two thousand and eleven accounts, town manager, other salaries, twenty-five thousand dollars, treasurer collector, other salaries, twenty thousand dollars, police salary, paid holidays, twenty-five thousand dollars, public safety, central dispatch, personnel services, sixty thousand dollars, public works, personnel services, parks and grounds, full-time, fifty thousand dollars, public works, personnel services, cemetery, full-time, thirty-five thousand dollars, public works, contractual services, public streetlights, thirty thousand dollars, public works, contractual services, rubbish collection and disposal, two hundred thousand dollars, public works, sewer, personnel services, thirty-five thousand dollars, board of health, other salaries, twenty thousand dollars, elderly services, other salaries, twenty-five thousand dollars, schools, Shawshin Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School District, seventy-seven thousand dollars, unclassified and reserve, veterans, retirement, ten thousand dollars, the entire amount of available funds being six hundred and twelve thousand dollars, to the following fiscal year two thousand and eleven accounts, police salary, overtime, sixty thousand dollars, fire salary, overtime, seventy-five thousand dollars, public works, personnel services, snow and ice, extra help, overtime, forty-six thousand dollars, public works, contractual services, snow and ice, miscellaneous services, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, public works, materials and supply, highway, gas, oil, tires, other departments, twenty thousand dollars, public works, materials and supplies, highway, gas, oil, tires, DPW, twenty thousand dollars, public buildings, heating fuel, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, capital outlay, public buildings, miscellaneous facilities improvements, one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, total, six hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, the amount is six hundred and twelve thousand dollars transferring from the various departments at the top of that blue, purple handout, and transferring to the, the items Mr. Kira mentioned at the bottom of the handout, discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, voted. We're on Article number fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purpose of providing senior citizen work opportunities for services rendered to the town in accordance with the town's senior citizen tax work-off program, or take any other action related there too, is there a motion, Mr. Shampoo?
Thank you, Mr. Shampoo. I move that fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars be raised and appropriated, appropriated from fiscal year twelve tax levy and other general revenues of the town, to be spent by the town manager for the purpose of providing senior citizen work opportunities for services rendered to the town in accordance with the town, with the town's senior citizen tax work-off program.
The amount, lady, is there a second first? Motion's made and seconded, the amount is fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, discussion, Mr. Segal.
Yes, Carl Segal from Lawrence Court. I'm just curious where that number comes from, is that like a percentage of people available, or what? Ms. Kira?
It's, it's a budget amount that allows us to employ as volunteers, up to twenty-four seniors, the statute allows you to pay the minimum wage, which is eight dollars, they can work up to eighty hours, so it's, it's simply a mathematical computation from there. Eight dollars an hour times eighty hours, six hundred and forty dollars times twenty-four seniors equals a amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and...
Sixty.
Sixty dollars.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, voted. We're on Article number fifteen, on page fourteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day, or take any other action related there too, is there a motion, Ms. O'Connell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that six thousand dollars be raised and appropriated from the FY two thousand and twelve tax levy and other general revenues of the town, to be spent by the town manager for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day.
Thank you, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, the amount is six thousand dollars, discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, voted. We're on Article number sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of seven hundred and fifty dollars each, a total of fifteen hundred dollars, for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section Nine of Chapter Forty of the General Laws as amended, the lease of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the New Ellsworth Post Two-Four-Five-Eight of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, and the American Legion Clubhouse, Inc., for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington Post One-Thirty-Six of the American Legion, or take any other action related there too, is there a motion, Mr. Samaglia?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that one thousand, five hundred dollars be raised and appropriated from FY two thousand and twelve tax levy and any other general revenues of the town, to be spent by the town manager for the purpose of renewing under the authority of Section Nine of Chapter Forty of the General Laws as amended, the lease of Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the New Ellsworth Post Two-Four-Five-Eight of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, and American Legion Clubhouse, Inc., for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington Post One-Thirty-Six of the American Legion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, the amount is fifteen hundred dollars, discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, voted. This concludes the budget portion of the warrant, ladies and gentlemen, and we will continue on the rest of the articles through the random selection process, but before I do, I just wanted to take a moment and thank Mr. Dougherty and the Finance Committee. These, these folks put an awful lot of time and effort into the town budget each year, and I wanted to publicly thank them for the, for that effort and for the time, thank you. Mr. Byrne?
A question I have about the questions in random order, I'd like to make a motion to take the questions in numerical order, and I'm not sure if that motion is in order, because I'm not sure if there's a bylaw that says we take them randomly.
It's a good question, and there is a bylaw that stipulates that we take the budget articles up in specific order and the other warrant articles up in random selection process. The way that you would need to change that is to have a petitioned article at a town meeting and have the bylaw changed, okay? You're welcome. This is on page thirty, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to enter an agreement, the terms of which shall be, as determined by the selectmen, to self-convey or otherwise dispose of all or part of the following described parcels, following a determination made by the town manager that the land is not needed for any municipal purpose, and in accordance with Chapter Three, Section Sixteen of the Bylaws of the Inhabitants of the Town of Wilmington Revised and other applicable law. The parcel located on Wywood Street, described in the assessor's records as map sixty-one, parcel six, or take any other action related there too, is, Ms. Jennifer O'Connell here? The town manager had deemed this parcel to be not surplus, as I had mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, and that we would entertain a motion to pass over this, I just didn't know if she was here specifically, if not, I'll entertain a motion to pass over.
No motion.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, voted. We're on Article number thirty-four, which is on the same page, to see if the town will vote to amend, update, and revise the official map of the Town of Wilmington dated January first, nineteen seventy-three, prepared for the planning board by the Engineering Department and adopted by the Town of Wilmington under Article Seventeen of the warrant for special town meeting of June twenty-fifth, nineteen seventy-three, and recorded at the Middlesex North Registry of Deeds on August twentieth, nineteen seventy-three, in book of Plans M, Plan Seven Twelve, to show the now-existing public ways, parks, and private ways in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty-One, Section Eighty-One E, F, and G, provided said map has been lawfully adopted, maintained, and is still valid, or take any other action related there too, Mr. Nelson.
This mic's on, okay. I, I, I move to see if the town will vote to amend...
And, and Mr. Nelson, does your motion read as is in the booklet?
Yes, it does.
Great, I, I'll take that as the main motion, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, Finance Committee recommendation, is disapproval, discussion, Mr. Nelson.
Yes, but going back to nineteen seventy-three, when the town first adopted the map, there were basic general provisions that the town had to comply with in order to legally adopt the map, and one of those was to file a document with the Department of Housing and Community Development. Back in June, two thousand and nine, I made a public records request to that department, and they have no such record on file. So my, my first question would be to town council as to whether or not the town has complied with the statute and the map is in fact valid.
Mr. Moderator, my office has looked at this, and there is no legal authority that the failure to file the map with HUD in any way invalidates its adoption by town meeting.
Okay, Mr. Nelson?
I guess it's kind of, you kind of had to argue with that, even, even though it doesn't comply with the statute, but take it for what it is. The, the current official map, well, the official map has never been updated and revised, and it's essentially missing over two hundred and fifty streets, and again, in the statute, it says that various subdivision approvals and, and the like shall, shall become part of the official map, and they have not been. It's never been updated, over, over the last, I don't know, fifteen years, my family's been involved in numerous litigation with questions about the official map, and if you could even just look at the annual report, you can go through page, pages nine and ten, and it lists the different litigation that are pending in the land court. On page nine, it lists land court case two-six-seven-four-nine-nine, which is a case that the Board of Appeals had issued our family the permit it was entitled to, and the planning board sued the Board of Appeals and myself, and that's still sitting in the land court and, and pending, and again, costing the town and my family tens of thousands of dollars. Let me see, there's another case that's four, oh, H. Sharon Street, where it took over twenty years for our family to finally secure a, a building permit, and as part of that was a mediated settlement agreement. As part of that, a settlement agreement, the town was required to issue an eighty-one G certificate and an eighty-one F certificate. The town has breached that agreement and has yet to, yet to file the eighty-one F certificate, which in turn would draw a line on the official map and amend the official map. So rather than waste anybody's more, you know, any more time of anybody, I, I move that the town update and revise the official map as it's required to by law.
Further discussion, sir?
For Meadow Road, I'd just like to ask if the Finance Committee could address their position of disapproval on this matter.
Mr. Dougherty or a representative of the Finance Committee?
It was our understanding that the engineer's office had updated maps and that the filing with the registry of deeds was not necessary.
Further discussion? Mr. Nelson?
I, I didn't quite catch what Mr. Dougherty said about the town engineer updating and revising the official map.
Mr. Dougherty?
The Finance Committee was under the impression that the engineering department for the town had updated maps and that the filing with the registry of deeds was not needed.
I, I, I don't see how that could possibly be, and, and I've made an issue out of this official map for the last two years now, and I've contacted every department, and to my knowledge, they haven't updated anything, nor have they filed it in accordance with the statute, so it's made available to the public. And, and, and another part of it also is, is the planning board has never adopted any rules or regulations that deal with the official map. It's under eighty-one Q of Mass. General Laws, Section Forty-One, Chapter Forty-One, Section Eighty-One Q, where the town has to advertise, and they have to adopt rules and regulations specifically that relate to dealing with the official map, and they have never done so, and it's been over, what is it, fifty years, forty years?
Further discussion, Mr. Kira?
I just want to assure everybody, the town does have updated maps, we believe that this particular article has no force of law, as the town council has just indicated, despite what Mr. Nelson has indicated in terms of the town spending all kinds of money on council, as the members of this august body understand, we have a fixed fee retainer arrangement with town council, so it doesn't trouble me at all when they're defending suits, frivolous or otherwise, a number of the pieces of litigation that have been referenced by the, by the speaker, and I'm certainly not going to speak to items that are in litigation, but I can tell you that they are a result of appeals that have been taken on numerous cases where the town has prevailed, and then there have been appeals, and so that's certainly everybody's right to make an appeal. One of the reasons I believe that the Finance Committee indicated in our meetings that they didn't approve of the article in addition to what was just stated, was that the petitioner did not appear at the public hearing to explain his petition... stated was that the petitioner did not appear at the public hearing to explain his petition to the Finance Committee. So for many reasons, I—I truly am ambivalent about this. I'm just trying to set the—the record straight. If—if the—the body votes for this, nothing changes. If the body doesn't vote for this, nothing changes. We have updated maps. You heard town council say that we were in compliance with the law.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. Mr. Nelson, you've already—you've already spoken twice, so you only get two—two—two times to speak.
He—he just—personal privilege, as far as Mr. Kira relating to the cases with my family that are pending. He made inaccurate statements, and I like to address that.
Specific to—the case that was appealed, I think the only comment they made, Mr. Nelson, was that there were cases that were ruled in the town's favor and were appealed. I'll—I'll let you speak to that.
That—well, that's not—that's not accurate. The—the appeals are appeals from the Board of—Board of Appeals, and the other cases that are pending, one in particular is where the planning board has sued the Board of Appeals. The town has sued the town. And to—to say that it's—you know, they—they've prevailed and taken an appeal, I filed motions to dismiss that case, and the town has nothing—does—has no interest in dismissing it. It's sitting there in the land court for ten years. I'm in the process of preparing a summary judgment, and on a final note, Georgetown has an official map, and they're updating their map next Saturday.
Further discussion? We ready for the vote? We're on Article number thirty-four, ladies and gentlemen, as presented by Mr. Nelson. Those in favor of Article thirty-four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
Defeated. We're on Article number twenty-four, on page twenty-three. To see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of the Town of Wilmington Revised by deleting existing Chapter Five, Section twenty-four in its entirety and replacing it with the following, or take any other action related thereto, Section twenty-four, Regulation of Pawn Brokers. And that description and new proposed bylaw continues on page twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm not going to bore you with reading the entire description of it. I assume that the petitioner of the article will explain what the intent of the bylaw change is. So is there a motion, Mr. Newhouse?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the bylaws of the inhabitants of the Town of Wilmington Revised be amended by replacing existing Chapter Five, Section twenty-four in its entirety with a new Chapter Five, Section twenty-four, which would establish regulations and requirements for the licensing and operation in the town of—in the town of pawn brokers as set forth in Article twenty-four of the two thousand eleven Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Newhouse. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Discussion, Mr. Newhouse?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to yield my time to the Police Chief, Michael Begonis.
Chief Begonis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and town meeting participants. This bylaw is actually a sister bylaw to Article twenty-three, and in discussions with town council, we recently had a cash-for-gold business open up on Main Street in Wilmington, and one of the issues we've seen over the recent decline in the economy was a lot of increases of thefts and B and Es throughout the area, breaking the entrance to houses and vehicles and things like that. What we're seeing is a lot of these pieces of property that are stolen are showing up in different pawn shops or secondhand shops across the Commonwealth. Lieutenant Chris Neville does a wonderful job regionally, going through these and analyzing them on a regular basis, and we've recovered quite a bit of—of stolen property and given those back to the families, a lot of them, you know, family air rooms that are priceless to the individuals, that these individuals pawn at these different locations for short, short money. So this basically is—is a bylaw that was drafted by town council on my request to be consistent with Mass. General Laws and to give the police department an opportunity to be able to review the property that has processed through these secondhand stores and pawn shops. This one here would be specifically relating to property that was taken on loan, which the town previously did not have a bylaw on that.
Thank you. Further discussion on Article twenty-four? Mr. Segal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's a current Section twenty-four that deals with similar shops, does it not?
Yes, there is. I would defer to town council on this. He—in discussion with him, felt that the current bylaw should be bifurcated into two sections, if my recollection is correct, and there's a legal reason why.
Mr. Foscat is shaking yes. Correct?
Mr. Moderator, Chapter one forty of the General Laws authorizes towns and cities to regulate pawn brokers. It separately authorizes towns and cities to regulate secondhand dealers, junk dealers, and folks in that type of business. There are some, but not many, differences in the way the General Laws allows towns to regulate these various types of business, so we felt that even though, when you read the two proposed bylaws, they are largely identical or similar, there are some small differences, and we think that it's consistent with the General Laws, would be appropriate to have them adopted as separate articles.
Thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Segal?
Yes, I have some questions on some of the details of who it would apply to, because I believe that the way this is written, it might apply to potential individuals that it might not have been intended for by disc—by—but what I've heard so far. It says that in order to qualify, or within this bylaw, I—I believe it's, you know, property that's acquired or purchased or received by this individual that has this permit, and I'm—I'm confused by who it may apply to in the future. I mean, I'm concerned that—that it's a very broad statement is—to how that is defined.
Chief, you want to—can you answer Mr. Segal's question on who this specifically would apply to, what type of individuals, businesses, sign?
I can—only from what I've heard from questions from the—the public in the past, the citizens of Wilmington, there were some questions about would it involve somebody having a yard sale at their house, and the answer would be it would—would not pertain to them. This is for businesses that are established with a property and an address in town that take used goods, metals, iPods, electronics, things like that in. In this specific article, like I says, a sister article to the—the, I believe, twenty-three, this one here would—would—would regulate—not prohibit, but regulate the individual from taking that on pawn or on loan. So in other words, the individual will come in, drop off an iPod, get twenty dollars for that with an agreement that they would return in so many days and pay that loan off. And if not within so many days, that property would become the property of—of the business. This doesn't prohibit anybody from doing business. It basically regulates. This is a very common practice throughout the Commonwealth. It's the way that police officers are able—to go in and—and regain the stolen property of others. It's not designed to be Big Brother per se—excuse me—but some people think it has that effect. But this is not inconsistent with what is done throughout the Commonwealth of multiple communities.
Mr. Segal?
Yes, my question is—I—I respect the police chief. I understand what his intention is. My question is whether or not the wording in this particular bylaw cannot be, at some point in the future, used in a different way than the intention of the police chief, because it is written in very broad terms as to who it applies to and what it applies to.
Mr. Foscat?
Article twenty-four pertains to pawn brokers. If somebody's a pawn broker, then it applies to them. If somebody's not a pawn broker, it doesn't apply to them. That's consistent with the way the General Laws read, and it's also consistent with a number of ordinances or bylaws that other cities and towns in Massachusetts have adopted. So if somebody's not a pawn broker, they're not covered by Article twenty-four.
Thank you. Actually, I had all my notes on twenty-three, not twenty-four, so I'm trying to flip back and forth all the time, but okay. I—I—I believe that there are a number of questions I have with this, and I—I guess I'll bring them up on twenty-three because that's where I wrote all my notes. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Bardner?
On this article here, I—I believe we all understand the chief's concern with the theft and recovery and everything. He's doing an admirable job, but as Mr. Segal said a second ago, the way the law is written, I'd like to question town council or the chief to explain it further. The casual—we know there's a number of people in town, when times are tough, they take scrap metal to the yards, and according to this article, it says junk, et cetera, et cetera. There are a number of people engaged, not in a full-time business. They—they could be carpenters or otherwise, but when times are tough, "Hey, I got some iron. You want to scrap it for me?" Now, does this law pertain to these individuals that do it casually during the year, and are they applicable to get a license?
Mr. Foscat, maybe you could explain what a pawn broker is and how that description pertains to the bylaw?
I—I have a feeling that questions are being asked about the article that isn't before the body right now, which is Article twenty-three, because Article twenty-four, as I've tried to make clear, this is the one that pertains only to pawn brokers. If somebody isn't in the business of taking property and making loans on that property, then they're not a pawn broker, and so it wouldn't apply to anybody else.
We clear? Mr. Bardner, you all set? Mrs. Linnahan?
The question?
I'm not seeing anybody else looking to speak right now. We're good? Mrs. Linnahan, you good withdrawing that if we just take the vote? Are you good withdrawing your motion? I think we're ready to vote. Okay, good. Thank you. I'll accept that as your motion. We're on Article number twenty-four, ladies and gentlemen. Those in favor of Article twenty-four is presented signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. I informed you at the outset of the meeting that I would inform you when pizza was here, and I have now fulfilled my obligation. We're on Article number twenty-eight. On page twenty-eight. To see if the town will vote to amend Section three of the Town Charter of the Town of Wilmington by adding the following language, elective officers shall serve no more than two consecutive terms to the end of Section three of the Town Charter as shown in the bylaws of the inhabitants of the Town of Wilmington Revised, or take any other action related thereto. Is there a motion, Mr. Nelson?
Yes, I move to see if the town will vote to amend Section three of the Town Charter of the Town of Wilmington by adding the following language, elective officers shall serve no more than two consecutive terms to the end of Section three of the Town Charter as shown in the bylaws of the inhabitants of the Town of Wilmington Revised, or take any action—other action related thereto.
Okay. Mr. Nelson, you would—you had sent me a proposed wording change to this article. Are you—are you sticking with what's in the booklet, or are you looking to move forward with what you had sent me?
I'm—I'm looking to—to amend with what I'd sent to you previously, correct?
Okay, yes. So it—I—I'm okay if you want to read your motion that you sent me, and then I can—we can work on that as making that the main motion.
Okay.
Okay.
To continue on, an act amending the charter of the Town of Wilmington, Section three of the Town Charter, Statute nineteen fifty, Chapter five ninety-two, Sections one, is amended by adding the following language, elective officers shall serve no more than two consecutive terms to the end of Section three of the Town Charter, election offices—uh, Section three, election offices, election—election of selectmen at the first town election following acceptance of this act. There shall be elected two selectmen for three years, two selectmen for two years, one selectman for one year upon the qualification of the selectman. So elected the term of the office of Board of Selectmen then existing shall terminate. At each annual town election thereafter, the voters shall elect selectmen for the three-year terms to replace whose terms are about to expire. When a vacancy occurs among the selectmen by reason of death, resignation, change of residence from the town, or other disability, the remaining selectmen shall order a special election to be held not less than sixty-five days and not more than ninety days following the notification of the vacancy, at which time the voter shall elect a selectman for the remainder of the unexpired term. Elective officers shall serve no more than two consecutive terms or take any action related thereto.
Okay. So, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Nelson—well, first of all, let me ask Mr. Nelson. Mr. Nelson, your intention is to limit the terms of selectmen. Is that correct?
It would be all elective officers.
The section—so—so the section that you are amending is Section three, which is specific to selectmen only.
Okay, well, then—then my mistake's all okay. That—that's fine, right?
So are you okay with your main motion where you have the verbiage elective officers changing that to selectmen?
That's fine, correct, sure.
Okay. So what Mr. Nelson is attempting to do, his petition article was to limit—Section three pertains to the selectmen. He is looking to limit the number of terms that the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, a selectman can serve on the board, to two. To do so, you have to change the Town Charter, which I am okay allowing Mr. Nelson to amend his motion in the booklet to do so, as long as it pertains specifically to term limits on selectmen and not all elective offices, as his petition article originally stated. Okay? We're clear? We're good? Is there a second? Motion's made—it made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is disapproval. Discussion, Mr. Nelson? And—Mr. Nelson, I—I will need that in writing, okay?
Yeah, I've got it right here, Jim. If—the key part of this is that elective officers, being selectmen, shall serve no more than two consecutive terms, being that you serve two terms—uh, one term if you're lucky enough to be elected again to a second term, then you are not allowed to run a third term, but you have to basically take a year off, and then you can come back and—and try your luck again. And—and that's—rather than go on and waste everybody's time, that's the gist of the article.
Further discussion? Mr. Kira?
Mr. Moderator, I don't think we should disenfranchise the voters. I think the voters should—uh, can make their own selection. If they want to keep a member of the Board of Selectmen on for more than two terms, as they have done, then they should. If they want to eliminate that person's ability to serve in the Board of Selectmen, then they should. I don't think we should consider disenfranchising the voters. Plus, and I—I recognize your ruling and I respect your ruling, I think the notice that was given to the public was that all elective officers, which would be the moderator, school committee men, housing authority, positions that in—that in the past, for example, this year, we had to have a run—a—a candidate on a write-in ballot. So I think that—the—I think the Town of Wilmington is perfectly capable of determining who their selectmen ought to be, and that's the way it should—should stay.
Further discussion?
Yes, Jim.
Anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Yes, Mr. Shimpel?
As a sitting member of the Board of Selectmen, I hate to sound too self-serving here, but as it turns out, we do in fact already have a system of term limits exercised last week at the polls. It's called Election Day. And frankly, I'm of the opinion, at our level of government, where we are volunteers, we're not being paid. We don't—so—we don't accumulate war chests and power over time the way maybe higher levels of government do. If you want to get qualified people to volunteer and put their name in—in the hat, so to speak, for the job, I think this will potentially limit those candidates that come to—into the picture. So, again, we do have term limits already in place, and you exercised term limits last week at the polls. That's all I have to say on this.
Further discussion, Mr. Nelson?
I—I would just follow up in—in stating that i—if anything, it would create— I would just follow up in stating that if anything, it would create, encourage more people to run for the Board of Selectmen. And as you stated, it's a volunteer position, but people are willing to spend $4,000 and $5,000 per campaign, and essentially, you know, win an election based on the issues, you basically buy it. The Town of Concord, for example, as a matter of tradition, they have two consecutive term limits, and then you basically, your time serving the community is up. And finally, most of the town's bylaws and the way it's set up, it strongly favors incumbents, and I'll just leave it at that.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote? We're on Article Number 28, as presented by Mr. Nelson. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
We're on Article Number 36. On page 31. To see if the town will vote to establish a disabled veterans' tax work-off program and raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of providing disabled veterans' work opportunities for services rendered to the town in accordance with said program or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, I move to see if the town will vote to establish a disabled veterans' tax work-off program and raise the appropriate, appropriate sum of $10,000 for the purpose of providing disabled veterans' work opportunities for services rendered to the town in accordance with said program or take any action related thereto.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is disapproval. Discussion, Mr. Nelson?
Essentially, this is the exact same verbiage as what's used with the senior citizen tax work-off program, and I will just yield my time to the Veterans Agent, and based on whether he recommends approval or disapproval, that's fine by me.
Further discussion? Mr. Smagli?
Mr. Moderator? Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I recommend disapproval of this article for a few reasons. Number one, there's already clauses in place for disabled veterans. 22A, veterans with a minimum of 10% service-connected disability has a $400 abatement off their taxes every year. 100% disabled veteran gets $1,000 abatement every year off their property taxes. And also, a taxpayer who receives a personal exemption may not receive another exemption on the property, which is exemption of a Clause 18 hardship exemption or Clause 45 exemption for solar or wind power improvements. If a taxpayer qualifies for one or more personal exemption, the accessory should grant the exemption for the prior, the higher of the two. So I don't, I don't think that we're not doing something, something for disabled veterans, and I also am not even sure if this is a, I remember an article like this similar last year, that I don't even think it's legal. I don't think we could do what you're trying to do with this article right now, and I'd have to refer to Town Council for that.
Mr. Foscat?
But I am recommending disapproval of this article. Thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you there, Mr. Smagli. Mr. Foscat, Mr. Smagli had a question, if Article 36, as presented, is appropriate and legal, or what Mr. Nelson is trying to accomplish from the article would be legal?
Mr. Moderator, it's not clear that it would be lawful. I can't definitively say it's illegal. There are comprehensive regulations by the state concerning local tax issues. It's unclear to me that this would fall within that and be prescribed, but I can't say it's lawful either. I think it's, I think it's an ambiguous area as far as legality goes.
Thank you. Further discussion? We're ready for the vote? Ms. Nelson, did you want to speak again?
No, that's fine, Jim. Take the vote.
Okay. All those in favor of Article 36 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
We're on Article Number 18, which is on page 14. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money representing the amount of proceeds received by the town from the methyl, tertiary, butyl, ether products liability litigation settlements or otherwise to transfer such MTBE settlement proceeds to the water fund or do take any other action related thereto. Mr. Bolero?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Selectmen, the Town of Wilmington, my name is Joseph Bolero, Jr. I live at 300 Salem Street. I'm one of your co-commissioners of the Water and Sewer Department. I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money representing the amount of proceeds received by the town from the methyl, tertiary, butyl, ether, MTBE products liability litigation settlements or otherwise to transfer such MTBE settlement proceeds to the water fund or take any other actions related thereto.
In the amount, Mr. Bolero, is $3,902.34?
That is accurate, Mr. Bolero.
Great, I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Discussion, Mr. Bolero?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Further discussion? We're ready for the vote on Article 18. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're on Article Number 30, which is on page 29. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws and associated zoning map of the Town of Wilmington by voting to rezone from residential 60 to residential 20 the following described parcel of land. The land at and known as 11 Harold Avenue, Wilmington, Massachusetts, as more fully described in the deed recorded in Middlesex North District Registry of Deeds, Book 2541, Page 486, said premises containing 60,015 square feet of land. 11 Harold Ave is located on the town's assessor's map as Map 23, Block 9, Parcel 109, and I won't read the entire description to you, ladies and gentlemen. I think you know where it is or take any other action related thereto. This parcel can be found on the map on page 34 in your booklet for a more detailed description, so you'll know where it is. Is there a motion, Mr. or Mrs. Bardner? Yes, sir, Mr. Bardner?
Yes, we are asking the town to rezone our article from R60 to R20.
Could I just get you, Mr. Bardner, to say, "I moved that the town vote..."
Okay, I moved the town vote.
And does your motion continue as is contained in the booklet?
And my motion continues as is contained in the booklet.
Great, I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is disapproval. Planning Board recommendation is disapproval. Discussion, Mr. Bardner?
I've lived in town for 50 years, and we've lived at this one location for about 30 years. We've talked to all our budding neighbors, and they're in agreement of recommendation of changing it from R60 to R20. In addition to adjoining neighbors on Reed Street and Harold Ave, we're rezoned to R22 years ago, and they were also disapproved by the town. I'm asking the town to, the voters to approve this measure.
Further discussion? Mr. Sorrentino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We'd just like to say that from the planning perspective, this is spot zoning. The Planning Board would really rather that we do sections of town and certain areas. This just kind of represents spot zoning, something that we would really rather avoid.
Further discussion? Mr. Bardner?
It was spot zoning. The two articles before and two previous years ago were apparently the same, same type of rezoning, so I'm disputing the spot zoning. Not to say it isn't, but they were rezoned also.
Mr. Moderator and ladies and gentlemen, this, this article, while it may not pass the Attorney General's sniff test for spot zoning, the Planning Board works very hard to maintain the integrity of various zoning districts. When those two parcels were rezoned by this body a while ago, the Planning Board's recommendation was, at that point as well, not to do this, for this very reason, that it then creeps along. People come forward and ask to rezon their property, too. If the neighborhood wished to rezon the whole area, then that's something the Planning Board could look at and consider the impact. But this is a one-by-one, one person getting advantage that his neighbors do not.
I think it's...
Mr. Bardner, you've already, I'm sorry, you've already had two shots to speak. Mr.
Representative Micali, excuse me. Thank you, Jim. Mr. Moderator, I just want to say this. Sometimes you have to use a little common sense. If you look at where that lot is situated, I think it abuts, and I pardon, pardon me for not doing my homework, it abuts Sharshin Commons. Am I correct? Sharshin Commons has zoning and, which is unique in this community, and this, it would be a large lot compared to what he abuts. The last two that were given, that were approved, I think we know who one of them was, and it was well-deserved, and the town meeting saw fit to approve those. You know, I think, let's be consistent, let's give a resident a break sometime, rather than put him through hoops constantly. So I would move that we approve this article.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. This is a two-thirds vote, ladies and gentlemen, so I'd ask the tellers to take their places. I've heard some discussion on both sides of this article. All those in favor of Article 30 is presented, signify by rising at your place. All those opposed to Article 30 is presented, signify by rising at your place. The voters as follows, 87 in the affirmative, 35 in the negative. The motion passes with Sorry for the delay, just like to make sure we get it right. To see if the, it's on page 14. To see if the town will vote to authorize or reauthorize, as the case may be, revolving accounts pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the various boards, commissions, departments, and agencies of the town or take any other action related thereto. Is there a motion, Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to reauthorize the following revolving accounts pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as follows. First, a compost bin revolving fund with the established spending limit of $4,500, with the source of revenues being the sale of composting bins, the spending authority being the town manager, and the purpose for which money may be spent is the purchase of composting bins. And second, a subsurface sewage disposal upgrade revolving fund with an established spending limit of $200,000, with the source of revenues being betterment, receipts, and other loan repayments from property owners participating in such said programs. The purpose of expenditures being the repair and upgrades of subsurface sewage disposal systems and the repayment to the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust of any funds advanced to the town for this purpose, and the spending authority being the Board of Health with the approval of the town manager.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Ladies and gentlemen, the amounts are on the compost bin revolving fund, a spending limit of $4,500, and on the subsurface sewage disposal upgrade revolving fund, a spending limit of $200,000. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Voted. We're on Article Number 27, which is on... We're on Article Number 27. Ladies and gentlemen, Article 27 and Article 26. Charter, Statute nineteen fifty, Chapter fifty-nine-two, Section one, as follows, is amended by striking from the third sentence of such Section seven, the following clause: "But shall be a resident of the town during his term of office." So that Section seven, as amended, reads as follows... And Ms. O'Connell, does your motion read as contained in the booklet the rest of the way?
Yes, please.
Great, I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Discussion. Mr. Newhouse.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen brought this article forward in light of the gentleman who withdrew Article twenty-seven, in light of his petition article, which certainly I thought was a good idea, and I think that the various members of the board have likewise expressed that they think it's a good idea. We had questions about whether or not Article twenty-seven, if it were to pass here, would be in a form sufficient to effectuate its intent. With respect to the substance of the article, as folks may have heard when the moderator recited the current Town Charter provision, it allows the Board of Selectmen to hire a town manager who resides in another town or another state, but during the term of his or her office, that person is supposed to be a resident of Wilmington. In nineteen fifty, when the town adopted its Town Charter, I suspect we didn't even have push-button phones, let alone cell phones and faxes and emails and all the other means of communication we have at our disposal today. So I just think that, for myself, it makes sense to enable the Board of Selectmen to cast as wide a net as possible in order to secure Wilmington's next town manager, and parenthetically, that's expected to happen in 2012. So I think it makes perfect sense for the Board of Selectmen to have the ability to hire a town, prospective town manager, who may not be burdened with the prospect of moving to town for a three-year appointment, three-year contract, and that may actually chill the number of quality applicants that the town might otherwise have to choose from. So that's the purpose behind it, and I'd ask folks to support the article.
Further discussion, Mr. Segal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Simply put, I think you have to have skin in the game. I don't think it'll affect... If somebody from California or somebody from some other town wants to apply for town manager, I think that that's fine, but during the first term of their holding office, they have to move here and become a resident. I don't believe that a non-resident is going to have the same investment in a town as the residents of the town, and it's... And the town manager is the chief resident of the town. It's difficult to say whether the garbage is being collected or not if you're living in some other place, and in all deference to cell phones, I have a cellphone on my hip, but I've left the auditorium three times because my son keeps calling me from his Boy Scout project, okay? I'm not at the Boy Scout project, I'm here, and the town manager should be here too. Thank you.
Mr. West?
Good afternoon, Frank West, to Birchwood Road. I just wanted to also voice, Mr. Newhouse, I'm in total support of everything you just said. I believe that exactly as... And again, I understand where Mr. Segal's coming from, that you should have skin in the game, so to speak, but you're close, and the applicant's going to be probably within the proximity of Wilmington anyway. I doubt very much if somebody's going to commute from too much out of state to be here. The other thing also is that, and if I could be corrected wrong, I don't think there's any position in Wilmington, with the exception of the town manager, that requires a residency requirement. Am I correct in saying that?
Mr. Newhouse?
Correct in terms of paid employees. Obviously, elected officials, a different story.
Right, but I was going to say is that you have, for example, if Mr. Kyra's not available, the assistant town manager is now in charge, and he's not required to be a town resident, nor is, I think, the superintendent of public buildings, I believe, is the next one in charge. And most of our superintendents, most of our folks don't live in town anyway, so I don't think that it'd be any different for the town manager to not live here also. Thank you.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes, I'd also like to speak against this article and say that the town manager should, in fact, reside in this town. It is true that we do not elect our town manager, we elect our selectmen, and the selectmen, in turn, appoint the town manager, but the town manager probably has more to do with the direction of this town, with the management of this town, with how much we pay in taxes and what we get for services than any of the elected officials we vote for. Therefore, I feel strongly that the town manager should have skin in the game, should reside here, should, in fact, enjoy the same experience we residents enjoy, and I think we will get the most value from our town manager. If that limits who we can select, or someone's not willing to live in this town, then I believe that makes them unqualified to manage this town. Thank you.
Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, I agree with my colleague, Selectman Newhouse. I'm agreement with the article, and I think we should vote in support. I believe this is the first step, or just a couple steps, in order for us to make this Town Charter change, and I do want to say publicly that I think whoever we choose to pick down as our next town manager will have awfully big shoes to fit, and I'll say it again, I think Mike Kyra's done an outstanding job as town manager and as our chief fiscal officer. I just want to state that. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Newhouse? Anyone who hasn't spoken before you... Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, Chief Nally?
Bernard Nally from Pineview Road, Wilmington. I'd like to, I support the article. I'd like to point out, though, I'm wondering if we've not caught in some language of the nineteen fifties. The manager here is referred to as he three times, and one is his. I wonder, I'm wondering if we should not adjust that language to he or her, or to something to that effect. I don't know if it's binding when you throw in this type of language. I see some ladies applauding, but back in nineteen fifty, when the Town Manager Act was adopted, I doubted there were many town or city managers of the female persuasion, and now I think there's quite a few, so I think we should perhaps amend this in language so that we can have everything open in the future.
So Chief, are you offering a amendment that wherever the article states he, it shall be he slash she?
Yes.
Okay. I see two. I see three. We come up with the same amount?
And there was three he's and one his. Now, if Town Council says we're all right in the future, under the present language, I don't have a problem, but I think it might be.
Mr. Fuscat, are we okay with it worded the way it is, or should we make this amendment just to be clear?
Mr. Moderator, I think you're okay with the language as it reads, because there are plenty of laws, in the general laws, for example, which were drafted back in another era, they use pronouns, he, his, him. In today's climate, in my opinion, it would be illegal to read that as preventing the Board of Selectmen from appointing a woman as town manager. If the town meeting wants to amend this, to add that, I think that's well within town meeting's rights, but I don't think it's necessary legally.
You want to continue with the amendment? You want to continue with the amendment? Yes, he does. The applause, I'm sure, didn't have any influence on that at all. So where it states he, it shall be he, she, and where the one section says his will be his, her, that's your amendment. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Discussion on the amendment. Okay, so, discussion on the amendment? Yes, ma'am. Yes, there is. Yep. So we're voting on the amendment. So what you're voting on, if you like Mr. Nally's, Chief Nally's amendment, and you want to make that the main motion that we will vote on to adopt or not adopt, you should vote yes. If you like the original article, you should vote no. Okay? Discussion on the amendment? Those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're now on the main motion as amended by Chief Nally. Discussion, Mr. Hayden?
Having been somebody that's worked in a number of global companies in several different industries, I don't think we should be restricted in the people that we bring in to run such an important organization as this town, and I think with this bylaw, we're going to be restricted. People that may have kids growing up in Stoneham or somewhere like that, that would be perfectly good candidates, wouldn't apply for this job because they don't want to uproot their family. So I think we shouldn't have this kind of restriction at all. We should allow our town manager selection to be based on the best qualified candidate for the town, and as was said earlier, with communications capabilities today, this doesn't hold anything back.
Mr. Segal? Anyone who hasn't spoken? Yes, Mr. Collings?
Walter Collings, Fairmount Road in Wilmington. I just think that the selectmen sixty years ago realized that having someone with a vested interest in the town would live in the town. I'm all in favor of a national search, you can have an interplanetary search for all I care, but I think that they should live in the town, and as far as uprooting their family, they wouldn't necessarily have to do so. We have plenty of fine realtors here in town that could find them long-term lease for the one to three years that they're going to be living in the town that they are going to be managing. And furthermore, I'd like to say that I think we have a fantastic town manager right now, and I wish that he would agree to stay until he is too infirm to handle the job.
Anyone else who'd like to speak that hasn't spoken? Mr. Shampoo?
Speaking as one of your selectmen, and I suspect as one of the individuals who have some impact as to identifying a replacement or our next town manager, I agree with Mr. Segal's opinion that there is merit to the idea of the next, or to the idea that a town manager have skin in the game, so to speak. However, there are a number of criteria that will have to be considered: past experience, knowledge, education, you know, and I could go on and on, including residency. And I can tell you, speaking only for myself right now, when I am called or asked to evaluate the candidates, residency will be one of those things that I consider strongly. It won't be a limiting, it's not going to be all or nothing, but it will be a factor that gets weighed. That's, again, speaking for myself, knowing my colleagues the way I think I do, I suspect they will use the same process in evaluating the candidates. So it is important, I think, or there are importance, there is importance associated with where the individual lives, but it's not the end-all, be-all, and I think that this is a very important way for us to cast a very wide net so that we can, in fact, identify the best candidate for the job regardless of where they live, and so I ask you to support this measure. Thank you.
Ms. Yuric?
Anne Yuric, Sharshene Avenue. I got to address the skin in the game thing. For most of us, our skin in our employment is our paycheck, it is our reputation, and in this particular case, it would be contract renewal. There are teachers who work in school districts outside of their town, that doesn't mean they don't care about the school district they live in.
Mr. Marchese?
Mario Marchese, five Somerset. I also rise in opposition of this town article. Mr. Kyra's been an institution in this town, you see him at all the major events in town, and I think that speaks volumes to the town manager and his commitment to the town, and also when other people in town see him there and his family there, it just shows the great support the town manager has had for the town, and I think that influences other people in the town to support this town as a community, and when you live in this town, you become part of the community, and you understand the day-to-day things that happen in this town, interactions with other people, and if you're not here in town, you don't live here, I don't think you're going to be able to get that. There's many nights where I've gone to Town Hall, and the town manager has worked there since seven to eight o'clock at night, and he's putting all his effort into that, and I think because of the fact that he does live in town, he puts that amount of effort into it, and I don't think you're going to be able to find that in someone who doesn't live in town. I have no problem with looking outside of the town and going nationally and finding somebody, or maybe amending a contract to allow them, give them some time to come, to move to town, but I think definitely that the town manager should have residency in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Kyra?
Thank you for the kind comments, so it might seem strange that the folks that offered those specific kind comments, I'm in opposition of what they're suggesting. And I want to say, the reason why is I really believe that in this day and age, we're in a very different situation, and think of it yourselves. I think there are a number of competent CEOs that don't live in the community that they work. I could point out, for example, to one of the longest-serving city managers, who is arguably considered one of the better city managers in the country, and that's Bob Healy, who's the city manager of Cambridge. Bob commutes daily from Lowell. It has not affected his ability to manage that community for over thirty years. Bernie Lynch in Lowell lives in Chelmsford. In terms of whether or not a manager could have a commitment, it's really what you need to do is hire somebody who's going to have a commitment, and hire somebody who's going to have skin in the game because he is a good manager and not just because he resides in the town of Wilmington. You know, it would be very limiting in this day and age. The superintendent of schools has a presence in this community despite the fact that she lives in Winchester, but she's at numerous events all of the time. That's her skin in the game. We would not have the success here for the last many, many years if I didn't have a partner in all this in Jeff Hull, for example, who lives in Bill Ricker and lives closer to Town Hall than I do. And I don't know that anybody can say that he has not been a part of this community and has demonstrated a skin in the game over these past twenty-odd years, because oftentimes, when I'm there at seven or eight at night, the lights are still on in the other office. So I wouldn't want to eliminate people who can provide for the town of Wilmington the way we've been expected to provide for the town of Wilmington, and I don't think that it really matters in the end where they lay their head on a pillow. I think it matters in the end...
And I don't think you're going to be able to find that in someone who doesn't live in town. I have no problem with looking outside of the town and going nationally and finding somebody, or maybe amending a contract to allow them, give them some time to come, to move to town. But I think definitely that the town manager should have residency in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Mr. Kyra.
Thank you for the kind comments. So it might seem strange that the folks that offered those specific kind comments, I'm in opposition of what they're suggesting. And I want to say the reason why is I really believe that in this day and age, we're in a very different situation, and think of it yourselves. I think there are a number of competent CEOs that don't live in the community that they work. I could point out, for example, to one of the longest-serving city managers, who is arguably considered one of the better city managers in the country, and that's Bob Healy, who's the city manager of Cambridge. Bob commutes daily from Lowell. It has not affected his ability to manage that community for over thirty years. Bernie Lynch in Lowell lives in Chelmsford. In terms of whether or not a manager could have a commitment, it's really, what you need to do is hire somebody who's going to have a commitment, and hire somebody who's going to have skin in the game because he is a good manager, and not just because he resides in the town of Wilmington. You know, it would be very limiting in this day and age. The superintendent of schools has a presence in this community despite the fact that she lives in Winchester, but she's at numerous events all of the time. That's her skin in the game. We would not have the success here for the last many, many years if I didn't have a partner in all this in Jeff Hull, for example, who lives in Bill Ricker and lives closer to town hall than I do. And I don't know that anybody can say that he has not been a part of this community and has demonstrated a skin in the game over these past twenty-odd years. Because oftentimes, when I'm there at seven or eight at night, the lights are still on in the other office. So I wouldn't want to eliminate people who can provide for the town of Wilmington the way we've been expected to provide for the town of Wilmington. And I don't think that it really matters in the end where they lay their head on a pillow. I think it matters in the end how they respond to the needs of the town. And so I would urge you to cast the wide net and to look at everybody. Consider certainly where that person lives in terms of his accessibility or her accessibility to the town. But don't make that the only factor, as Selectman Shampoo suggested. Make it a factor, but not the overriding factor. So I think this is a good amendment. This strengthens the charter. This is helpful to the town of Wilmington, and I would urge you to support the change.
Further discussion, Mr. Segal?
Thank you. I'm also in an unenviable position to say I agree with what town manager just said. But the bylaw that existed, that found him, says, the current bylaw, the town manager shall be, I'm sorry, he shall not need to be a resident of the town or this Commonwealth when appointed. And then it goes on to say that he should live here during his term. It worked the last time, and I don't have any problem with Jeff Hull or the superintendent of schools. We have fine professionals that work in the town that don't live in the town. But what we, when we write a law, we have to write a law that looks to the future, not to the individuals that are standing before us. Because the individuals might have a great intention and know what we mean. But twenty years down the road, or thirty years down the road, when you have a law that says, yeah, you can live somewhere else and telecommute. Or when the snow comes in and no one can move, you can stay home. Or, I don't know where the town manager gets his glasses, because the last time Mr. Kyra and I bumped into each other was at Pearl Vision. I mean, it's nice to have people with, that are local, that are running the town. It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote? We're voting on Article 26 as amended by Chief Nally to include the he, she, and his, her section. And otherwise, it is exactly as it is in your booklet. Ready for the vote? Those in favor of Article 26 as presented signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Tellers. Those in favor of Article 26 as amended signify by saying, standing at your place. Sorry. They're still counting. Thank you. Those opposed to Article 26 signify by rising at your place. Thank you. Vote is as follows, ninety-eight in the affirmative, thirteen in the negative. Motion passes. So it sounds like we're all in agreement that Mike Kyra should not retire and continue doing the great job that he's done the last twenty-two years, and and I'll entertain a motion to that effect at this time. We're on Article number thirty-one. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw and associated zoning map of the town of Wilmington by voting to rezone from residential twenty to general business, the following parcel of land or take any other action related thereto. The land known as Fifty-Six Balladville Street, Wilmington, Mass., containing 1.06 acres of land, and Sixty-Four Balladville Street, Wilmington, Mass., containing 1.25 acres of land, as more fully described in the deeds recorded in Middlesex North Registry of Deeds Book 4184, page 321, Book 18160, page seventy-five, and Book 18160, page seventy-six. Is there a motion, Ms. Sawyer?
Hi, I'm Ellen Sawyer. I brought this before the people and the boards in the hope that they will vote for this for me.
Yeah, Ms. Sawyer, can you just read, I voted the town, I moved that the town vote to amend?
I moved that the, wow.
I moved that the town vote to amend?
To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw?
Great. And does your motion read, is this contained in the booklet?
Yes.
It does. Great. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation, is disapproval. Planning Board recommendation, is disapproval. Discussion, Ms. Sawyer?
I've lived at this property my whole life, sixty years, and it has changed greatly over the time. When I was a child, you know, we played out front. Route 125 came in Route 93 and took the front of our property. Now Avalon is beside me and behind me, and it has just lowered my property value so much. I would really like to take this opportunity to be able to sell my home to buy another home in Wilmington.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, just for your information, this parcel can be found on page thirty-five. The map is on page thirty-five of your booklet. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
I'm Jose Cavallo on the second petition. And recently, I tried to remortgage my property. And when I did that, I disagreed with the value, and I asked the appraisal, why so low? And she said, look at your surrounding. And if you look at the map, you will see that my property is surrounded by Avalon exit and 125, which is all state road. And right now, we have a chance to sell the property. And presently, the town of Wilmington is receiving approximately $10,000 in taxes. If this is approved, the taxes will be in the hundreds of thousands, and I don't know how many, but it's up there. So I think this is a win situation for the town, for my, you know, for myself and for my neighbors. So I hope this body approves this motion. Thank you.
Mr. Sartino?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Planning Board strongly disapproves, recommends disapproval of this article. It's a residential area. There's no industrial around this area. This would be a major change in this area. It is fully not appropriate. Also, you know, I just want to make a point, whenever the planning board comes up to speak about these kind of articles, stuff changing, stuff zoning, it's based on the land usage. It has nothing to do with personal people. I'm sure we respect everyone who brings forth their articles and respect the fact that they are longstanding citizens within the community. Again, we just strongly oppose this. Avalon Oaks, we do not believe it really affects the value of other people's property. I find that very hard to believe. I think maybe more the economy might have something to do with someone's value of their property, but, again, we strongly recommend disapproval of this article.
Mr. Segal?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm looking at this map on page thirty-six, thirty-five, and those are two older homes that are there. I don't know these, I don't know the petitioners. But just looking at this and knowing what that neighborhood was like before the highway and before Avalon Oaks, and having that rental properties completely surround these two properties, I would rise in favor of this article, only saying that I think we need to cut these people a break. I think that they happen to live in a spot that just totally changed without their control, and I would rise to support them.
Further discussion? Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I didn't plan on getting up and speaking on this article, but after hearing the discussion, it just makes sense to approve the article. The location is residential, and they're looking to increase it to industrial. It's on Balladville Street. The frontage is Route 125. It's not that it's a subdivision located on Kenwood Ave., located in Reed Street, or located in a suburb in any state, anywhere in the Merrimack Valley area. The bottom line is it's on Route 125. It's on Balladville Street. It just makes perfect sense. After a while, people kind of get squeezed out of their property. We just voted approval not too long ago of a resident actually lives in a neighborhood, which I think was warranted, and I did support it. It just makes sense to approve it. You know, it's, once again, it's right off Route 125. If anybody looks on Route 129 by Lowell Street, 125 Balladville Street, traffic is there continuously, and it just makes sense that, give these folks an opportunity to rezone it. Thank you.
Mr. Mckasey?
Yes, I also rise in support of this article. I travel along that road every morning, and there's literally tens of thousands of cars that go up and down that road, and it's Exit Forty off the highway. And to say, at one time, yes, it was a great residential area, but today, I wouldn't say that's residential at all. It's more of a commercial area now in terms of the volume of traffic. And I wouldn't want to see any other homeowners go into that property. If they have an opportunity now to sell the property and turn to a commercial property where the town can gain additional tax revenues, I think that would be a benefit to this town, and I argue in favor of this article. Thank you.
Mr. Erickson?
Greg Erickson, One West Street. I would have to disagree with something that was previously said, and that is that there's no industry anywhere around there. Fact of the matter is, one of the biggest industrial zones we have is right there. It abuts this zone. And it's Balladville Street, which is, once you get past the ramp and the highway, it's a very industrial place, and people come to that. A lot of people come to that place and need a place to stay. There's no hotels or anything like that around here, around this area. And the closest place is down in Woburn, I believe, for someone to stay overnight, looking for a place to stay, people involved in business in that area. My understanding is that the people who are interested in developing this land, removing the two homes that are there and developing the land as a small hotel. Now, when there's rezoning involved, there's no guarantee what's going to go in there. But that's what's driving this particular article. I've been to Ellen and Lenny's house several times. They're very good friends of mine. And since Avalon, before and after Avalon, since Avalon, their property is often flooded terribly. And it's because of Avalon. They've built in there, and there weren't all the necessary mitigating conditions to keep that area from flooding. I've seen that place where their whole lawn is flooded. They can't mow the lawn. You can't even walk across it because of the change in the area. So they've been really squeezed out environmentally. They suffer the consequences of everybody building around them. And I think this should be approved so that business can go in there, serve that industrial community, which is right next door. They're right next to the ramp on 93, so people coming to the area that are seeking hotel room or whatever the business is going to be there, they don't have to travel through the town to get there. They just get off the highway, it's right there, get back on. Or come from the industrial area, which is right on the other side of the highway. That's about all I have to say about it. I hope that everyone approves this article.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes, I rise in hopes that the article will be defeated because I don't think it's in the best interest of the town. However, it wants to be described by the previous speaker or otherwise. It is not an industrial area. It is a residential area. The industrial area that he speaks about is over the other side of the highway. I mean, there are four ramps that go through Wilmington off 93. It's probably no closer than where I live on the other side of the town, on the Redding side of town. That doesn't now make it a commercial area. What you would do by doing this is provide another opportunity for a gateway into Wilmington right by the North Intermediate School, right by all of the residents who live there currently, for the potential of a number of different things. Maybe we need another gas station to open up into the town of Wilmington, or maybe we need the hotel that they have talked about on such a small acre of land. Or acreage of land. I don't think this makes sense in that area. I don't know that values have gone down. There's been no empirical data that indicates that anybody's value has gone down in that area, and nobody has shown us that. Nobody has been specific to us about what plans to go there. So it really is something that you need to look at very carefully. You know, suggesting that we're going to get hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue on a de minimis parcel of land because it's going to be rezoned is just that, a suggestion or some pure speculation. Sometimes it's not about the money. Sometimes it's about the quality of life. And in that particular area, I don't think that we would be doing the town a service by simply carving out a piece of residential property for a business use. This is very different than the zoning change that was made previously because you were talking about a change from a residential zoning district to another residential zoning district. You're now talking about a change from a residential area to a general business area, and that's an entirely different animal. So I would urge that we vote against this particular article.
Mrs. Hamilton, to the planning board's disapproval. Is that the discussion?
Pretty much, Mr. Moderator. I don't really have a lot to add to what Mr. Kyra has said. I think his examples are very to the point on this particular article. There is no guarantee as to what will come in in this district. We have industrial land in the town of Wilmington now that is not at its highest use. Folks up on Balladville Street, some of them are having difficulty utilizing their property to the full extent. The town, at this particular point, doesn't particularly need more industrial land. It is, this parcel is surrounded by residential use. There is no industrial uputter to this property.
Mr. Mckasey?
Many years ago, the town has benefited by the installation of Exit Ramp Forty-One. And I think it's time now that the residents there in that area, who once had that land, was taken for the installation of that ramp, I think something that should be given back, and they should have the opportunity to sell their homes and profit from this if they're allowed to. Because the town has profited many times over because of that exit ramp. And I think if the residents have the opportunity, I think they should be given it. Thank you.
Mary and Amber Burlington Alf. I know these two properties. They sit in a gully and with Avalon Oaks in behind them and all. It's made this property almost totally useless. They can't enjoy it. They flood. Their property is spongy and soft, and they can't take care of it. And they should be allowed to have a good life, like other people. They should be able to do this so they can get out of there. Thank you.
Mr. Doherty?
My name is John Doherty. I'm on Balladville Street, and I'm opposed to this article. I have a neighbor over there. It is a residential neighborhood. The industrial section is on the other side of 93. We have a lot of kids in the area, and would like to see the article defeated. Thank you.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote? I'd ask the tellers to take their places. Yes, sir, you want to?
Hello?
Yes.
I'd like to speak. I'm not a resident.
I'd like to speak. Um, I'm not a resident. Um, I was retained by the owners to do a feasibility study on the property. Um, I've been doing several months' work. I've spoken to many of the-
What's your name, sir?
My name is Peter Terminy.
Very good. And you're representing the owners?
Well, I, I did some work for him. I did a feasibility study for the property to find out what its highest and best use would be. And I came up with, and it was a fairly extensive study, that a hotel would be the highest and best use. Granted, if you change the zoning, there are other potential users under zoning code, but for a practical, from a practical standpoint, the land only lends itself to certain uses. The fact that it's in many places 20 or 25 feet below grade prohibits a lot of the uses. In fact, the petition that was submitted was modified from the original request to do industrial down to general business so that you couldn't put a gas station or you couldn't put a car wash or any manufacturing or industrial. It would be limited retail potential users. And again, because it's 20 feet below grade, you're not going to get a McDonald's or you're not going to get a, a retail use. It just simply isn't practical. My analysis showed that there are no hotel rooms in, in the town of Wilmington. But you draw a lot of people from hotel rooms to work at the Balladville Park. It's one of the largest industrial parks in the area. Most of the service is coming from hotels that are in Woburn and Burlington. In fact, they send daily shuttles from people from those communities, taking people to the Balladville Industrial Park and taking them back. So, in effect, the town is putting up with the, the negative parts of an industrial park. You're, you're paying up with the traffic and, and the smog and whatever else it is, whatever services you provide, but the tax dollars are going to Woburn or Burlington. The rooms taxed, the real estate taxed, any meals taxed. Again, you're putting the burden on you, but you're giving them the benefit. So, I, I, I understand that you, you say it's a residential area, but the only real residential abutter is Avalon. And Avalon, quite frankly, I've talked to them and they would be required to cooperate in the development because the sewer that's necessary is owned by Avalon. I've discussed the potential of a project of a hotel. They're willing to enter discussions to allow a potential developer to use the sewer. Without that approval, they, they couldn't be a development. If they felt that it was going to inhibit their project, I don't think they'd even enter the discussions. So, the fact that it's on the highway and it's just opposite from the large industrial park, I don't believe you're going to see any increase in traffic in downtown Wilmington. So, the traffic is essentially going to go into the industrial park and back down to Logan Airport. So, you're not going to have a, a large negative impact from it. It's not going to be a, a burden on your school system or your waste disposal. You're essentially, it's two acres that is, quite frankly, is difficult to, it would be difficult to find something that would be less, less intrusive to the town than to have two acres that's bordering 93 and 128 and, and creating a service and giving you the hotel rooms as well as the income. And I have spoken to some of the industries in Balladville-
Thirty seconds, sir.
They would like to have a hotel and conference center near the, near the site as opposed to the transports back to Burlington. Thank you.
Mr. Sorrentino?
So, we're going to get a hotel and a conference center on two acres? Now, um, let's think about this a little bit here. Uh, you know, we've had, the planning board, and I don't believe anyone else in town, has seen this feasibility study. We don't know what it took into account. Someone has spoken to somebody? Who did they speak to? Do we, do, what authority are those people that they spoke to? Let's think about Balladville Street and all the industry that is up there. What we see that comes before the planning board, if there was a need for a hotel, and there has been some discussion, don't you think some of the people who own some of this unoccupied land would have come forth with a hotel somewhere along the line? We haven't seen one. So, I, as a general rule, um, as you know, in the tri-town, we're also overlooking that whole area. Down the road, there may be a hotel to service some of the industries over there and some of the businesses, but this is, would not be the appropriate place. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Kira?
I, I really rise, Mr. Moderator, just to try to clarify and correct what the, what the speaker prior to Mr. Sorrentino indicated. Um, I have the zoning book before me and I see what is allowed either by right or by special permit in the general business district. Um, and it would be retail stores under 30,000 square feet, a business or professional office, a bank, a limited service restaurant, a general service restaurant, a hotel or motel, a lodge and club, a funeral home, a veterinary care, personal service shop, craft shop, a building trade, commercial trade school, amusement facility, auto service car wash, auto repair body shop, vehicular dealership parking facility. So, with all due respect, the requirements for a hotel or motel under the business district, general business, it takes the same exact requirements of an auto repair body shop or an auto service car wash.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote? I'd ask to tell us to take your, sir, I've already, as a non-resident, and I asked you specifically if you represented the owner or not, and you stated you didn't. I've already offered you probably more courtesy than I offer most non, non-voters. Tell us, take your places. All those opposed to Article 31 is presented, signify by rising at your place. Voters as follows, 58 in the affirmative, 66 in the negative. Motion fails. We're on Article Number 21. On page 16. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A, which reads as follows: "Any public office in any city or town may remain closed on any or all Saturdays as may be determined from time to time in a city by the city council, subject to the provisions of the city charter, or in a town by vote of a town at a special or regular town meeting. And the provisions of Section 9 of Chapter 4 shall apply in the case of such closing of any such office on any Saturday to the same extent as if such Saturday were a legal holiday or take any other action related thereto." Is there a motion, Ms. O'Connell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A, which reads as follows: "Any public office in any city or town may remain closed on any or all Saturdays as may be determined from time to time in a city by the city council, subject to the provisions of the city charter, or in a town by vote of the town at a special or regular town meeting. And the provisions of Section 9 of Chapter 4 shall apply in the case of such closing of any such office on any Saturday to the same extent as if Saturday were a legal holiday."
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Segal?
Is that me, Mr. Moderator?
Thank you. Um, I was just discussing it. I don't think the town hall is open on Saturdays most time anyway, right? Um, but I was commenting that I don't think we do anything on Saturdays except for town elections. Would this affect town elections? Mr. Kira?
Uh, the town, this wouldn't prevent the town from opening on Saturdays. Just, this would just allow us to close on Saturdays and meet time deadline issues. So, that's really, it's a kind of a housekeeping article. So, we, we're occasionally open on Saturdays for elections or for clinics, for, you know, the like, special activities, but-
For town meetings.
-we're usually closed. And town meetings, yep.
Mr. McCasey?
Hello? There we go. Um, yes, I was just curious. If this has already been covered by Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A, then was the purpose of adopting it into the town bylaws? Just, just curious why? If it's, if it's already covered by Mass. General Law, that's all.
We're not adopting it into town bylaws, but you have to, you have to accept the general law.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the vote? We're on Article Number 21. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Voted. We're on Article Number 23. On page 18. To see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised by deleting existing Chapter 5, Section 23 in its entirety and replacing it with the following or take any other action related thereto. Section 23, Regulation of Dealers in Junk, Old Metals, or Second-Hand Articles. Ladies and gentlemen, this continues on page 18, 19, 22, and part of 23. I'm not going to bore you with reading that entire section to you, so I will, um, at this time, accept a motion. Mr. McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised be, be amended by replacing existing Chapter 5, Section 23 in its entirety with a new Chapter 5, Section 23, which would establish regulations and requirements for the licensing and the operations in the town of dealers in junk, old metals, and second-hand articles, as set forth in Article 23 of the 2011 Annual Town Meeting Report. Town meeting warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? This motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Discussion. Mr. McCoy or Chief Begonis? Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, once again, as I spoke earlier, this is a sister article to Article 24. Um, both articles relatively have identical language. Um, this one pertains to a brick and mortar store as well that deals with second-hand junk, old metals, and articles. Uh, that would be gold, once again, iPods, electronics, that type of merchandise. This article does not prohibit people from exchanging those goods or entering into that business. What this article does, consistent with what many other communities do, is it regulates them to the extent that they have to take the name and information of the person delivering the goods to them for sale. Um, what we find quite often is similar to the broker bylaw, is that large amounts of metal are stolen from construction sites on a regular basis. Copper pipe, copper wire, um, items like this aluminum. Uh, we've previously in the town lost entire bleacher sections for the aluminum. Uh, and this material goes to various individuals who collect second-hand goods and materials. What we're asking in this bylaw is to allow for the recording of the individual that's, that's turning in that material to the vendor so that we can go back and lay the date, review the books administratively, which, like I said earlier, is something that's done across the Commonwealth and the state of New Hampshire as well, and be able to find missing or stolen goods. The purpose is not to prohibit anybody from dealing in that. It's to give a control for the process of dealing in the, in the second-hand goods.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Byrne?
Um, I agree with the Article 23 and support it. However, I would like to offer a formal amendment in Section 23.1.1 under definitions about the definition of who a dealer is. And in offering this amendment, I'm concerned about being more exact about the definition of a dealer to be sure that it excludes people who are engaged in informal exchange of goods. So, the current dealer definition reads, dealer means any person or entity conducting the business of buying, obtaining, acquiring, receiving, selling, exchanging, dealing in, or dealing with items which are subject to this bylaw. My amendment adds to that and who maintain a shop for the purchase, sale, or barter of such articles. This definition of dealer excludes persons who occasionally buy or sell items designated under this bylaw on an informal or occasional basis, whether from their residence or through auction, electronic, and otherwise. And I have the-
Great. I was trying to write, I wasn't keeping up with it. Okay, so you're replacing Section B with the following. So, dealer means any person or entity conducting the business of buying, obtaining, acquiring, receiving, selling, exchanging, dealing in, or dealing with items which are the subject of this bylaw and who maintain a shop for the purchase, sale, or barter of such articles. This definition of dealer excludes persons who occasionally buy or sell items designated under this bylaw on an informal or occasional basis, whether from this, their residence or through auctions, electronic, or otherwise. Is there a second to the amendment? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee want to take a stand on the amendment or too, too quick? You want to? I'm not trying to force your hand. I was just asking. Okay, you want to hold off? Okay. Discussion on the amendment.
I gave a copy to the, uh, town council as well.
Great, thank you. Discussion on the amendment itself. Chief?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just make reference to the, um, Section 23.1. It does discuss license and application procedures, um, to be keepers of shops for purchase. Um, I, I don't legally know what the implication would be, but ultimately, that's our intent is to, is to have this bylaw pertain to people who maintain a brick and mortar type of operations. This wouldn't be for somebody that sold something on Craigslist or eBay. And I don't even know if the town or the police department would be able to pursue that in any way, shape, or form, anyway.
Chief, I'm sorry, what's the section that you referred to? I'm sorry, 23.1?
Section 23, if you look at 23.1, License and Application Procedures, third line down, um, and or second-hand articles and to be keepers of shops for purchase.
Okay, great, thanks. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Everybody clear what the chief was referring to? Okay, great. Okay, want to continue with the amendment?
Yeah, I wanted to add to that is, again, I'm not in any way standing against this article and fully support the intent of what Chief Begonis is trying to do. I just wanted to further clarify the definition of dealer to make it very specific about who is and who is not a dealer so as to not prevent an informal exchange. I sell my neighbor my used lawnmower that I could be somehow subject to this law. And that's why I want to very, very tightly define the definition of who a dealer is.
Okay.
And I, and I ask the town council if, if he would agree or disagree that this further tightens that definition.
Mr. Moderator, uh, if you notice the bylaw I has drafted, 23.1.1, it actually goes further than your current bylaw because your current bylaw just refers to dealers. And this proposal would define a dealer as somebody who is in the business of, and then it lists the various activities. Uh, I don't think that, for example, the resident's question about, uh, selling his lawnmower to his neighbor would, it clearly would not be covered by the term business. You have to be in the business of dealing in these goods. Uh, I don't think that the proposed amendment changes the sense of the- I don't think that the proposed amendment changes the sense of the proposed bylaw. I'm not particularly convinced that it's necessary, but as I said, I don't think it changes the intent, and if the body feels that it further clarifies that, I see no inappropriateness with it.
So you, you don't feel it, it changes the bylaw or limits the chief's ability to enforce what he originally intended?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Again, it's intended to only apply to people who are in business of dealing with these things. The references to persons who occasionally buy or sell items on an informal or occasional basis would not fall within business, so I think it's consistent with that.
Great, thank you. So on Mr. Byrne's amendment at this point. Discussion, yes, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Brian DeSault, I live at Two Somerset Place, and I've lived here for over forty years, and I also own a consignment shop in Wilmington. I just kind of wanted to get clarification on the, the holding period. And I, I support this, and I, I think it's a long time coming, and it affects me greatly. But I just wanted to get clarification on the holding period. It, it's under the section of transaction with minors, and typically in my shop, we don't, we wouldn't allow a minor to come in and consign anything either way. But the holding period is what would greatly affect my business. And again, I just wanted to get clarification on, is the holding period just for transactions with minors?
Chief, did you want to take that one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. In looking at, that it clearly is a thirty day hold period, and the unfortunate aspect of that is, is as we go through the process, for our purposes of reviewing these, and once again, we do recover a lot of stolen property in, in the process. These are legitimate businesses that are used for an illegitimate end by certain nefarious individuals that come through. And the burden of that is, it, it affects the shop owner as well as the victim that loses, because ultimately if the shop owners put some money out, they end up losing in the process. This article, in this situation, I understand it's a thirty day hold period, but there's a lot of process that the police department has to do as they review these, and they send them out to the various other communities, and they're reviewed again, over and over again, and the detectives meet regionally on a regular basis to review these slips as well from the other communities. I, I understand it's a burden, but we need time to be able to process the information ourselves as well. And sometimes, things are stolen, they're not reported for a short period of time, and it just gives us a better opportunity to be able to address that.
Great, thanks, chief. We're on the, ladies and, we're on the amendment, so any discussion, I want to keep specific to whether we should amend the article to what Mr. Byrne has proposed. So further discussion on Mr. Byrne's amendment? We're ready to vote on the amendment? So if you are in favor of the language that Mr. Byrne read to you, and then I read to you subsequently, I would ask, I would recommend you vote in favor of the amendment. If you don't like the language that Mr. Byrne proposed, you should vote against the amendment. If you vote in favor, if the body votes in favor, we will then take up the main motion as amended. If you vote against the amendment, we will then take up the main motion as is in the booklet. Clear on what we're voting on? Yes? Great. Okay. We're on the amendment. All those in favor of amending article twenty-three, as presented by Mr. Byrne, signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Tell us, take your places. Those in favor of amending article twenty-three signify by rising at your place. They're still counting. Thank you. Those opposed to amending article twenty-three signify by rising at your place. Thank you. The voters is follows in Mr. Burnham's amendment, twenty in the affirmative, sixty-seven in the negative, the amendment fails. We're back on the main motion. On article number twenty-three, further discussion, yes, sir?
Thanks again. So, so I just wanted to get one more clarification on this. If, if I have a customer that comes in and consigns, say, twenty articles, I have no issues with taking pictures of stuff, I have no issues with logging stuff, it's all current stuff we do today, and, and I feel that there's nothing in my shop that's stolen. But the way it's written here, I feel that this would greatly affect, there's another consignment shop in Wilmington, as well as the Salvation Army, and if we have to put a thirty day holding period on all these articles, I, I can't have someone legally come in and give, try to consign items and have the room to store it for thirty days, and I think Salvation Army would feel the same way, and, and I think the other consignment shop in Wilmington would feel the same way, too. It's just, it would be way too much of a burden.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr., Mr. Mccasey was first, yeah?
I rise in, in support of this article, but I just, one question for the, for the chief. Chief, how is this going to affect the Salvation Army or the Epilepsy Foundation, because they do have a building?
The Salvation Army and the Epilepsy Foundation take things in donation. They're not exchanging money for that. You bring excess clothes, you give it, you might get a tax write-off, but they don't give you cash for it.
As long as there's, is an exchange for money, then this would apply. Otherwise, they would be exempt.
Yes, that's, the intention is not for the Epilepsy Foundation or for Big Brothers organization coming in and picking up a bureau or something from here, that they would have to comply with this.
Right, thank you. Mr. Segal?
Yes, and, and I appreciate the intention of, of the police chief, but I also have questions about brick and mortar dealers. What about the mullahs? They pay a nickel for every used can we give them. I mean, that fits the definition of acquiring used equipment. What about a car dealer who has a brick and mortar shop but accepts money on a used car? I mean, I know there are separate regulations for them, but there's nothing that excludes them within this regulation, and they would have to hold on to the used cars or, or the, you know, my old soda bottles for thirty days, and take a picture of me in order to give me the, the four dollars and whatever.
Sure. There, there are laws that dictate that transfer of the five cents or ten cents per can, and there are also laws already administered over the auto dealer, as far as the purchase and sale of secondhand vehicles, and we issue licenses on that on a regular basis as well, so they're covered under a different section.
I, I appreciate that that's your intention, but your, but the law that you want us to approve says a dealer means any person or entity conducting in the business of buying, obtaining, acquiring, receiving, selling, exchanging, and dealing, or dealing with items that are subject to this bylaw. So if you're acquiring it, that is a donation, according to the way this is written. So I know it's not your intention, but thirty years down the road, there's a different police chief, and he's going to have a different interpretation of the way this is written.
Mr. Newhouse, did you have clarification on that point?
Well, to my way of thinking, Mr. Moderator, thank you. The entire bylaw begins with the very first section that speaks to the Board of Selectmen acting in its capacity as the licensing authority for the town of Wilmington, and then goes on to detail some of the regulations that we're talking about in substance here. At some point, we need to be practical. The Board of Selectmen is not going to license redeemable cans. The Board of Selectmen is not going to deal with, or try and inhibit or impede volunteer organizations from picking up clothes or used cars or anything else. So I, it's, at some level, we have to take some faith, and put some faith in, in the recommendations of council and the police chief. And if we agree with the intent of this bylaw, let's go with it, and if we don't, then vote against it. Thank you.
I respectfully submit that that doesn't answer the question as to why we would write a law that's based on our intention, not based on the words in the law. There are lots of laws out there that are out of date, because the intention was good, and then life goes on, and it changes, and another person will have a different interpretation of the same words.
All set. Further discussion? Mrs. Lenihan?
In sitting over there and listening to this, we own a heat, large heating and air conditioning company, I'm going to start with that. A lot of times copper disappeared when you're building something. I have to go back to the town years ago, when there was copper disappearing on projects, and, and it was sold. This is a very practical article, and I feel, as a resident, and also a former business person, that it makes a lot of sense. And bringing in the, the Salvation Army, they're, they're not going to take, or nobody's going to bring them anything particularly that's going to fall under this, I could be wrong. In the most recent thing in the front of the town crier, it, it tells you explicitly what someone does with stolen property. This man, when he was arrested, he had TVs, he had jewelry, he's got to be selling that somewhere. I believe that this article in Wilmington will eliminate anyone being able to get rid of stuff that easy, and I support this article wholeheartedly.
Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Vino, I live in Shawshank Ave. I can keep the mic on. Now, I support the article. I had an antique business for many years in another town, and we were required to do exactly what's in this article. The only thing I think that is, is a burden on the dealer is that thirty day holding period. Dealers put out a lot of money for merchandise, and for them to have to tie up their money for thirty days before they can sell an item, does create a burden on them. But other than that, the article is something that can really save the dealers from being prosecuted for receiving stolen property, because they can prove where they got it from.
Thank you. Further discussion? We're ready for the vote?
James? Mr. Moderator?
Mr. West?
Yes, hi, Frank West, two Birchwood Road. Question that I have for the police chief is, I'm, as, I'm a licensed real estate broker, and many times with the sale of the house, we include other things, such as sometimes furniture, lawn mowers, those types of things. Is, so what would be the restriction on that?
Chief? Chief, the question is, would there be any restrictions on sale of other items when someone is looking to sell, sell a home, as an example, and they look to sell their furniture as part of that sale? Would there be any...
No, that's not the intent. This is for, like I said, typically more the brick and mortar operation, the pawn shops, the consignment dealers, and, and like I said before, this isn't, this isn't saying that any of those businesses are illegitimate in any way, shape, or form. They're used as a legitimate business for illegitimate reasons, and that's the purpose of this bylaw.
So I guess specifically, chief, just, just so I get clarification, that if I was selling a home, and included in the sale were appliances, or things along, that are not structurally part of the home, would I be subject to this bylaw?
You would not be.
Thank you.
It's not the intent of the bylaw.
Mr. Wallace?
Question to the chief. Towns that have this bylaw, do they require thirty days?
Typically, yes, it's a thirty day hold.
Because I see this as putting two people out of business, two visitors in town are going to have to close if they have to store this kind of material for thirty days.
It's quite a, it's, it's typical language that you would see in any other bylaw or ordinance that covers this type of issue as a thirty day hold. This language was culled from other bylaws and other ordinances that, that we didn't reinvent the wheel when we wrote it. It was written by town council, and in the process, taking language from other ordinances and bylaws that have already passed muster with the Attorney General's office after approval from the town bodies or the city bodies that, that approved them.
I think in the age of the green age, they were trying to use more recyclable materials in secondhand stores, are a way to improve that. I would say that with that wording, it's prohibiting us to allow secondhand stores.
Mr. McCoy?
Just to speak on this for a second, just going back and forth, I'm not saying I'm going to solve your problems, but being a businessman, consignment stores, if you have an agreement with somebody coming in, say, well, they get passed a new bylaw in the town of Wilmington, so therefore, how about instead of me giving you a check within now, how about in thirty days, when it's all cleared, you come back, and then I'll pay you, so there's really no initial investment? I mean, I think that would be an understanding, I think that would solve your problem. You know, just give the gentleman, whoever has the consignment, thirty days later, with an agreement of a new bylaw that's happening in Wilmington, it protects everybody, you don't have to spend any money in the initial stage, and everyone's happy.
Is that a question to the store owner, Mr. McCoy? Mr. McCoy, is that a question to the store owner?
Just a question to the gentleman, if you want to answer that, that's fine, but I'm just trying to help you, therefore, you're not spending all that money in the city. You have an agreement, you don't have to, and it's thirty days, I go and check, and it's all, all the thirty day waiting there. No, if that's an agreement, you can have a little bit of your right.
Well, tip, typically in my consignment shop, I, I, I don't buy the items anyway. So I, I'd like to get clarification on that, too, so I'm not actually physically taking possession. I have a contract with that person, I, I take IDs and whatnot, but typically, I, I don't take possession of the, the items. I agree, if I, if I take possession, and someone just wants to drop something off, this changes things, and, and I think it's, I think it's a good thing. I don't want stolen stuff in my shop, clearly. But, but I, I think the thirty, if, if someone comes in and they have twenty pieces of clothing, and they want to consign it, and, and we take, you know, fifty percent of that, I cannot hold that, that clothing for thirty days, but I, I physically haven't taken possession of it. If they want to come and pick it up in thirty days, it's still their product. I, I guess, I guess that's where the, there's some miscommunication or some confusion in the way it's written as well. I, I don't know if I'd be required on the consignment level, like, I, I totally understand as far as taking possession, but I haven't actually taken possession of, of their items, just like, you know, Salvation Army hasn't, and Epilepsy Foundation hasn't. I have, I have given them no cash for any of their items. If their items sell within a certain amount of time period, at the end of the month, I, I reimburse them for, you know, fifty percent of whatever the sale price is. I mean, again, I have, but I, I have all their information on file. If you walked into my store right now, and you said, who owns this vase? I could tell you exactly who owns it, I could tell you the, the address, the name, I, I, you know, license, whatever you need, I, I could tell you. This, this will put me out of business, so...
Ms. Ellsworth?
What I'm unclear on with the holding period, and I can understand where it would be prohibitive for the business owner, if providence of an item can be proven, why would there need to be a holding period?
You're questioning the chief or the store owner?
The chief.
The chief? Chief?
Let me just find that section here. I want to say there was language specific in here to an opportunity to not have to hold it for the thirty days. I'm trying to find the specific language.
With written permission?
I mean, they can come to the police department, show us the material, and we can give them an exemption on that. And certainly, our issue is not to put anybody out of business. I apologize if, 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 you know, that's the tone of, of what this is about. This is a rewrite of a, of a present bylaw. We already have a junk dealer bylaw in town. This is making it more contemporary to, I don't know exactly when the other one was adopted, but it's making it more contemporary to today's business practice. adopted, but it's making it more contemporary to today's business practices and how things work, so.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote? Oh, Mr. Smaglia?
Hey, Chief, I think you might have just answered my question. If, if the store does all the right things according to this bylaw, takes the pictures, does everything that, that they're required to do and brings it to you, say every Monday morning, they say, this is what we picked up last week, maybe you could cut the 30 days down to a week or something? You could check it out quickly on what the, you know, on your, on your list of stolen items in the area?
Yes, I mean, we would, we, the 30-day process is to give us time to be able to process things. Like I said, if there's a, what we find more often in this situation is a business will have a store in one of those green leaf boxes, a construction company, of $50,000 worth of copper items. That disappears. Well, they're not looking into that box for a week or two or sometimes up to, you know, 20-plus days and they go in, they say, oh, this stuff was stolen. When was it stolen? We don't always get the exact date and time that property was taken. So, the 30 days is a requirement, but it can be waived by the police department. Surely, we would be looking to speak with these people on a weekly basis because we really don't wanna process 30 days of work, you know, at the end of the month and, and then be able to give them the blessing that everything's okay. You know, sometimes we catch things, sometimes we don't, but we would be looking to do this on a regular basis.
Yes, sir.
Jim Durkey, Salem Street. Under holding period, it says acquisition or receipt unless the licensee has obtained written permission from the Wilmington Police Department. No such permission shall be granted until the expiration of at least two full days from the date of acquisition, purchase, or receipt. Doesn't that help somehow?
So, if I'm reading that correctly, Chief, after two full days, they can come to you, get permission to sell the items and they're off and running.
I apologize. Could you repeat the question, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, that, the question was about the holding period, that no such permission shall be granted until the expiration of at least two full days from the date of acquisition, purchase, or receipt. So, the, the store owner could, after two days of having the property, come to you for permission and you could grant it at that time and there'd be no holding period?
Yes.
Great, okay, thank you. That was, that was a question, sir? Thank you. Okay? Further discussion, Mr. Baudner?
I believe this is the article I wanted to speak on earlier. As I stated earlier, I believe the chief's intent is proper when it comes to the jewelry issue and melting down of gold at the end of the day and holding stuff for two or 30 days. But I'm concerned, I know at the end of the day, I may have some scrap left, scrap metal left over from the job. I throw it in the back of the truck, someone will say to me, now, am I a dealer? No, I'm just cleaning up on, on a job. Someone will say, hey, Mike, you going to the yard at the end of the week? Come pick up this at my place. Come pick up. Now, does that classify me as a dealer? And there, I'm not alone. I mean, there are many people in town that, in the hard economic times, they're picking up scrap metal. And it says all metal and/or junk. Do we have to get a license? I mean, the constraints that this law is going to put on us, one use only or once, once a month or a couple times a year in, in the junking. And this poor gentleman here beside me with a consignment shop, I mean, he's got people coming in, bringing in goods that are legitimate. I know the chief is, is talking about, and, and his intent is great in protecting us, but how, how do we discern the law that he is trying to pursue to other people trying to do business as himself and, like I say, myself and others, scrapping metal occasionally? Do we have to? I mean, can you imagine the stuff that people would have to hang on to for 30 days? There's, there's got to be, and I won't say a monetary, but a certain class goods. The law, as, as it's written in the book here, is too broad. I mean, it doesn't narrow it down. I mean, I know the chief is pushing the valuable items. I'm talking sheer junk and this, this man is talking commodities, consignment items. I think we should, I don't know, try to get town council, the chief, and water it down somehow. Thank you.
Welcome. Further discussion? Trying to, anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Mr. Marchese, I believe you've spoken already. All three of you have, correct? Anybody who hasn't spoken one time yet? Okay, we'll go, Mr. Marchese.
I'd like to make the motion to move the question.
Okay, that would be in order. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Okay, so the motion's on the floor to end debate and that would give the maker of the motion, if they should so choose, up to 10 minutes to address the body. So, this is not, this, this motion's not debatable. So, everybody clear on what we're voting on? We're voting to end debate on Article 23. Okay? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. Mr. McCoy was the maker of the motion and if you should so choose, you have some time. He, he would not like the time, so we're ready for the vote. So, we're voting on Article number 23 as is in your booklet. Those in favor of Article 23 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Tellers. Those in favor signify by rising at your place. They're still counting? Thank you. Thank you. The vote as it follows, 81 in the affirmative, 33 in the negative. The motion passes.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Segal?
I have a point of, of a question and maybe you can answer this. It was, one of my colleagues suggested that possibly on these counted votes, if people were to stand and just count off and go down the line, then everybody would kinda know what it is. It would take a little bit less time and is there a reason why we do it the way we do it?
Yes, so that we have people counting, specifically counting the votes and we register the vote here. And I do believe we'd take less time than actually counting off individuals. We have actual people counting the votes. So, that's the purpose for it. We're on Article number 35. 35, I've received written notice to withdraw Article 35. So, I do need to read this just for the record to see if the town will vote that in the event, at the current town meeting, the voters approve the construction of a new high school and the increase in taxes required to finance the project. I request the voters to give senior citizens having at least a 10-year residency a tax break on the financing increase to their taxes as follows. At ages 65 years, 80 to 80 years, there shall be a 75% reduction on the proposed new increase of taxation and at ages 80 years and over, no new school taxes shall be billed or take any other action related thereto. I received a motion to withdraw from the petition. So, Mr. Baudner, a motion to withdraw? Yes, there is?
Withdraw this.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Those in favor of withdrawing Article 35 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. And to your question, Mr. Segal, actually, it, it does stipulate in the bylaws that the tellers will take a vote of town meeting, so, yeah. We're on Article 22. Page 16. Before I read 22, I'd just like to welcome and thank a couple of members of our state legislature to our town meeting today. First of all, you've already heard from our state representative, Representative Jim Muselli. Thank you for being here, Jim. And our state senator from the town of Gloucester, State Senator Bruce Tarr. We're on Article 22, to see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town or want me to revise by adding the following, New Chapter 5, Section 52 or take any other action related thereto. Section 52, curfew in public parks, playgrounds, and fields. Again, this article continues on page 16, 17, and 18. And rather than reading that to you, I will go to a main motion at this point. Mr. Smaglia?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised be amended by adding a new Chapter 5, Section 52, which would establish curfew hours and related regulations in the town's public parks, playgrounds, and fields as set forth in Article 22 of the 2011 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation, approval, discussion. Chief Pagonis.
Thank you once again, Mr. Moderator and town meeting attendees. Article 22, Section 52 probably should be more worded as a hours of operation versus a curfew. I understand the pejorative nature of, of, of seeing curfew in the history of the United States very clearly and well. I, I think that because some of these articles that I presented are very lengthy, they lose some of their intent and meaning in the multiple articles. Article 22 consists of five sections. It has a definition phase and I think that in the definition phase, I've, I've heard a lot of comments about Section 52.1 definitions, D, town-owned property. The article does not prohibit people from going into all of town-owned property after certain hours. It only prohibits the unpermitted access to fields, grounds, and courts, that, things of that nature. The hours of, of, of the operation or curfew of these areas, they're already present, they already exist. If you go around town, you already see signage that tells you when, and when, when you can and when you cannot be on a public park or ground. The majority of them say that you cannot be there after daylight hours. This bylaw is giving you an hour in addition on both ends of that. So, if it's sunset at 6:00, you actually have an hour after sunset. If it's sunrise at 5:00, you have an hour before that by this bylaw. Currently, the signage in town is somewhat inconsistent. There are areas in town where there are signs, like the high school and this whole area here, says you can't be here after 11:00 and before 6:00 a.m. What we've tried to do is recognize that there needs to be consistency across the town. This is not designed to stop an individual from going for a run out here at the track at 5:00 a.m. What this is designed to do is to give us an opportunity to properly secure and to control access to the areas of town that we're seeing most of the vandalism, which are the parks and the grounds. Recently, the, just today, town meeting voted to pay $94,000 to maintain some of these parks and areas where they've had some issues and, and damage. And I can tell you, some of that damage is malicious. Some of that is caused by vandalism and the difficulty of it is, is when they see a black and white cruiser pull up, the individuals that are doing this damage just stop doing what they're doing. By the time they get up there, we can see the damage has been done, but for us to be able to say, you know, they did it, is very difficult. So, what we're trying to say is reasonable hours, you just can't be in this area. The point is not to have a hard and fast rule where we chase down and we set up cameras and we're looking to see if individuals are in parks and grounds in the middle of the night. Just like everything, we enforce traffic laws and we have a large amount of discretion in the enforcement of those traffic laws. And I can tell you, as, as I read through the logs and I look at the stats, the majority, and I'm gonna tell you, the majority of our motor vehicle stops are verbal warnings. The second most in those stops is written warnings. Not many people get citations because we understand how much of a burden that is. But if we didn't have the authority to enforce those laws, to enforce speeding, to say we have to set limits and to be able to actually take that back and do something if somebody says, you know, I'm just gonna speed anyway. Or if somebody says, no, there's nothing that prohibits me from being in this park other than that dumb old sign is a different one across the street, we find that the police department is very difficult for us. So, we would like to be able to have something that gives guidance as to what we do. One of the other benefits of this law is it, it addresses juveniles. And in addressing juveniles, right now, the only enforcement authority we could really take in a public park or ground where we found that something wrong was going on is to give them notice that they would be trespassing if they're caught here again. If you catch somebody trespassing, the modus operandi of the police department would be to arrest them, give them a criminal record, which carry through when they go to college for their applications. This here gives us an opportunity to put it back on the families to say, hey, we found this individual in the park late at night. I'm sure Mom and Dad would wanna know that. We have done that in the past. And Mom and Dad have said, well, that individual's actually been sleeping over Johnny's house and that would be inconsistent with what they told me. So, it gives us an ability to make connection, actually makes us be more community-oriented when we reach out and tell those folks what's going on. And if the parents aren't able to relate that to the child, the second time, the parent gets the fine. The child doesn't have this record that follows them for 30, 40, 50 years of their life. I think that's great language. I think it gives us an opportunity to address a situation without impacting that individual when they're 14 years old, when they're 20, trying to go to grad school or something. So, with the arrest ability in there, yes, it's in there, but you know, we can arrest for a lot of things in the town bylaws if you read them. The police have a right to arrest in many circumstances. Specifically in those situations, it would be when an individual says, I'm not gonna tell you who I am. I mean, you, you got a police officer out there and, you know, you got a police cruiser and, and you're busy answering important calls and then you get some individual says, no, I have to tell you, I'm not telling you who I am. Gives us an ability to say, look, if you don't tell us who you are, these are the ramifications for that. In, in, in that, is it the action that we're gonna take every day? No, that's not the intent of this bylaw. However, if you set times and rules and regulations in the town just by putting up a sign and there's no enforcement authority behind that, and it, it kinda ties our hand as police and, and we have your best interest at hand. We're trying to keep the public order. We're trying to maintain the grounds and make sure the security is present there so that, you know, people with magic markers aren't drawing up an entire, you know, brand-new, two-week-old park that was just installed through donations and recreation money. The intent here is to be able to say, you just can't be there after those hours. I can get into great detail about what those hours mean, but you know, 7:00 o'clock at night on July is a big difference from 7:00 o'clock at night in the middle of February. We don't really have a problem with people in the parks and grounds in the middle of February because it's cold out. They're usually covered with snow and ice. There's really no need for them to be there because they're not shoveled, they're not cleaned, they're not maintained. The reason that we developed this was to better assist us in assisting you. When you look at it, I've had many questions about what, why we focused focused on juveniles, or why we didn't just focus on juveniles. And the issue would be, that would be a civil rights violation. It has to cover everybody. It can't cover one social class or one demographic in the community. It has to cover everyone. And, you know, I believe that that's a small price to pay. There are permitted exclusions. There are exemptions to lighted courts. So you can be there after the hours that are set in this bylaw if the court is lighted. Most of the courts, I believe, in town are lit till about eleven o'clock at night. I don't know when the house, out in front of the high school here is lit a little later. We don't usually have a problem with that. But what if they're out there playing, yelling, screaming, hollering at one o'clock in the morning? We're looking for authority to be able to actually have some bite behind moving them along. And that's the purpose of this, and intent of this law. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Further discussion? Mr. Burnham.
Again, I certainly understand the intent of this article, and there are many good aspects to it. But again, I think sometimes the intent and the words could be misconstrued or confused in the future. So I do have one amendment to offer, which is under the Section 52.2.2, exceptions. Notwithstanding the foregoing prohibition, I'd like to add a Section C that says it shall not be an offense under this bylaw for a juvenile to be in a public park, playground, or field during the hours prohibited by this Section 52 while acting in the interests of an employer or voluntary organization, or while returning home as soon as reasonably practical from an organized sporting or other event which has been sponsored by an adult. Now, again, I don't believe this goes against, in any way, the intent, as the chief just spoke about it. But again, I believe the law could use some tightening up so that it is clear in the future if somebody happens to be in a park because the lights have gone out, and he hung around with his friends after playing baseball, and it's dark out, you know, I think there should be an exception made that they wouldn't be affected by this bylaw. Or while, again, somebody is working, I don't know, delivering a pizza or something like that. And I do believe that that's an important consideration. So I submit that amendment.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment? Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Burnham is looking to add Section C to 5.2.2, exceptions. And it's worded, it shall not be an offense under this bylaw for a juvenile to be in a public park, playground, or field during the hours prohibited by this Section 52 while acting in the interests of an employer or voluntary organization, or while returning home as soon as reasonably practical from an organized sporting or other event which has been sponsored by an adult. So motion, the amendment is made and seconded. Discussion is limited to the amendment and whether we should accept the amendment. Chief?
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. I'm not exactly sure, respectfully to the previous speaker, if that's something that would be a benefit to this bylaw. The situation is there's already a time set, one hour after sunset on these. Like I said, that's an expansion of the current rules that are posted throughout the town. I think that in that situation, and I'm trying to think of a situation, and maybe the former speaker could help me, where there would be an employer that had somebody on the public grounds doing work for the employer without the permission of the town. I just, I don't understand if that would be, if you could clarify that.
Mr. Burnham?
It could be as simple as someone passing through the town common or a baseball park on his way to make a delivery. And if that person happened to be under eighteen, and it's dark out, and they happen to pass on a public property or a park, I'm worried that that person would be subject to this bylaw, again, while they're in, and acting on their employment for an individual.
Further discussion on the amendment? Yourself. Yes, sir.
Jim, I'm at Shady Lane Drive. I guess I have a problem with the amendment just from a standpoint of, I can't imagine someone in the employ going to a public park or ground after hours, an hour after sunset, that, you know, may be subject to this amendment, especially if they're a juvenile. I'm not sure how many employers are sending juvenile employees to public places after dark on business purposes. Certainly delivering pizzas to a park after dark is probably not an advisable service. You know, there's no callback number from Domino's, I would imagine. And I think it also presents a hurdle for the police department where anybody, any juvenile they would stop, would use the excuse that they were on their way home, they were subject to the exemptions of this Paragraph C. So I recommend against accepting the amendment.
Ma'am?
Yes, my name is Rosemary Russo, and I live at Nine Powderhouse Circle. I approve of this article. Growing up as a child, we had a similar curfew. It was at nine o'clock. It was under, I think it was sixteen at the time.
Ma'am, I don't mean to cut you off, but we're strictly discussing Mr. Burnham's amendment at this time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's fine. Just stay right there. I'm sure we'll be back to the main motion in a second. Mrs. Linnahan, on the amendment.
The amendment now.
Yes, just the amendment. We're ready for the vote. Mr. Marchese, on the amendment?
Just a comment on the amendment. I think some other clarification of Mr. Burnham's amendment is more towards the sports. You have fall sports in the fall. You know, sun goes down at four or five o'clock. You have kids out there playing pop ball or soccer, and, you know, the game's over, the lights go out, and you got kids, you know, out there fooling around the field and stuff like that. I think that's more the intent of Mr. Burnham's amendment, so, thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment, Mr. Kira?
The article already covers that. That's fully covered by the motion. I think the amendment is superfluous and also could create, as the prior speaker indicated, some enforcement issues for the police.
Ready for the vote on the amendment? We're voting on Mr. Burnham's amendment, which would add a Section C to exceptions, which he and I both read to you previously. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
Amendment is defeated. We're back on the main motion. Ms. Russo.
Should I repeat my name and address again?
No, you're good to go.
Okay. Well, getting back to when I was a youngster, we did have this similar curfew in place. And I think it was, I think was right. It was good. And I noticed that when I came to Wilmington, there was never any debris in the parks, or it was great. I mean, now, you know, I think if you don't have this curfew, you just lead to vandalism, you know, kids hanging around, trying to think of, well, what can we do? And even kids from other communities, you know, like not necessarily Wilmington, but even Billerica, let's say, for example. And I think it's wonderful that our law enforcement keep on these kids because, you know, what are you doing from, let's say, Billerica, or from Andover, or from wherever, and causing havoc to the people that live near these fields and these parks? I actually approve of this, and that's what I have to say.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Linnahan?
Six years, and bringing up three kids. I can remember the police department at night. And my daughter particularly liked basketball. You could go down by the police department at night, and they had the place to play basketball, right next door to the police. At that time, there was a Broadway hit that said, Kids, What's the Matter with Kids Today? And my daughter's forty-eight years old now. Anyway, and she's the lead criminal justice attorney for the Superior Court in New Jersey. She's done quite well, and she's a good parent. There's nothing wrong, any more wrong with kids today, except I would like to take that off of Broadway and say, Parents, what's the matter with parents today? I would vote for this and do vote for it and support it. And the time of saying, you have these cellphones now, they're dealing with some kids that parents aren't paying attention to them. And if they're not home, let the parents come down and pick them up. That's in there here, too. And I hope that you will pass this because we're into where are the parents today? And the police department has done an excellent job. Support them in the passing of this article, and at least maybe we can clear up some of the vandalism here in town.
Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Tom Moderator. I'll keep it brief. I actually just have a question for the Finance Committee. I was just wondering if one of their members could explain why they disapproved of this article.
Mr. Dougherty?
When you're taking a look at the definitions, it said all town-owned property, and that was one of the reasons. And we figured that if someone was walking through the cemetery, walking their dog or whatever, after curfew or before curfew, it would not be fair. And that's the way we looked at it. The chief and his staff does a great job, and we just felt it was a little too restrictive.
Thank you very much. Could I then ask the police chief the question? Police chief, would this, would cemeteries be exempt, I guess, would be my question?
I wouldn't say necessarily exempt, but it is not included in this. If you look at it, I mean, I think the intent of putting town-owned property in the definitions D was because it's defined in A, parks shall mean town-owned property. So it's property of the town that's a park. But cemeteries are categorically and unequivocally not included in this bylaw. We would not, in a million years, dream of stopping people from paying respects to their loved ones.
Thank you. Mr. Sagal?
Thank you. And again, I'm very resident to speak. I'm very supportive of the police. The police have done a great job in the town. I like the chief. I think he does a great job. But again, his intentions and what he plans to do with this bylaw, I'm fine with because he's the chief. But I don't know the chief that's going to be in place in thirty years. And to use his own words, it's not intended to stop a person from jogging at 5:00 a.m., but 5.2.2.1 says it shall be unlawful for any person to remain, wander, stroll, or play within the boundaries. So we're passing a law that he's not intending to enforce for certain people, and he is intending to enforce for other people. And I say, fix the law. Don't pass a law that you know you're going to have exceptions to by intention. The chief also said it's not his point to have a hard and fast rule, but there's a discretion of the police as to what they're going to, how they're going to enforce this. And I appreciate that. But he said that one of the other tools that they have now is trespass. But they have discretion on trespass now. So the same argument can be used for that. I understand that we want to try and save the town property, but there is a bylaw on the books about putting signs and marking up town property. There is a bylaw currently on the books about alcohol on public property and how you address yourself and how you act there. There is a bylaw currently about minors and aerosol cans, I believe. There is a bylaw currently about defacing playgrounds. So what happens is they have a lot of tools that they're not using now because they want to use this other one. And I'm very reticent to say we need even more laws if they're going to be just, I understand the concept. I understand the intention of it. But I really think we already have a lot of laws that could be applied if they choose to apply them. I don't know that we need a new law to do some of the things that we're not doing now that are already codified by law. But I'll let you address it if you like.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sagal. Very astute. The issue is, is that there is no law to prohibit somebody from being in those areas. There is signage, specifically the signage doesn't have any authority behind it presently. And that's my issue with it. It just says you can't be there after daylight hours. I think that this bylaw is very well-written. I think this bylaw gives people more latitude. It extends the hours with restrictions. I mean, we close public buildings for certain hours. The library is not open twenty-four hours a day. You know, this gymnasium is not open twenty-four hours a day. And I understand they're buildings, but they're still town property, and the town has an interest in doing the best they can to protect them. Once again, if you're not allowed to be in the park, I don't have to worry about catching you with a spray can doing what you're doing. And the difficulty of that is, is the officers are very visible, and we want them that way. We don't want somebody sneaking around, hiding in bushes. So when they pull in with the cruiser, which is marked, has its lights on in the middle of the night down behind the town hall, and they see five kids in the brand-new park area that was just built, through, you know, hard work of the Recreation Department and public buildings, the best they can do is walk up and have a conversation and suggest they move along. The reality of that is, is the damage is already done. What I'm saying is, if they shouldn't be there, if it's after the hours that the park, if this bylaw is passed and it's closed, then that's the issue. They just shouldn't be there. And it's much easier. And that's my take on it. Other than going up and searching a kid to see if he has a can of spray paint on him, which I would defer we probably didn't have to do. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Shumpu? Representative Mocelli asked me if you could be so kind, he had a questionnaire out in the lobby, if you could be so kind to return that to the box that's out in the lobby. That would be great. Mr. Sartino?
Yes, I'd just like to say I'm not in favor of this bylaw. I know you have good intentions, chief, but the word curfew is in the bylaw. And several times today, you've used the word intent. You know, intent is one of those undefined terms. It can mean whatever the person who's interpreting it to their own means. It needs to be more, it needs to be specific. It just seems to me that we already have enough laws. Do we really need another one? Do we really need to, what about the kids that aren't causing that damage? Do we really need another curfew, another law to harass the kids who aren't doing anything because there are representatives that do? I mean, I don't really see the necessity of it. And if they're not going to be there, where do you want them to be? If someone is sixteen or seventeen, you know, myself, I know, I grew up in a city. I've only been in Wilmington for twenty-four years, but, you know, we hung around. That's what we did. That's what some of my children did. That's what the children after will do. Trying to say that you could, you could put an end to vandalism or someone littering, you know you're not going to be able to do that. It's just not going to happen. Some of it's just a rite of passage. It just seems like it's just a little bit too much. And no disrespect to you or your offices, but I think it just leaves a little too much opening for just a little bit too much harassment. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, up to back?
Thank you. Kathleen Reynolds, Second Avenue.
The woman behind you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Up to back, thank you.
Kathleen Reynolds, Second Avenue. I, too, am voting against this article. No disrespect to the chief or to his office. As a parent in this town, I believe discipline and teaching our kids respect should be left up to the parents and not the police department. As a juvenile defense attorney, I can tell you I see kids coming into juvenile court for the most ridiculous charges. It doesn't just end with a fine. It ends with kids being brought out of school to be present in court. It leads to pre-tour probation. It leads to other types of fines and fees and community service and a juvenile record. The juvenile record is going to follow them into their adulthood. I know there have been reforms to the quarry law, but nevertheless, the kid's going to have a juvenile record. I also have town surplus land next to my property, and my kids travel through it to get to the river down the street, and they travel through it to get to our neighbors' houses. So I wouldn't want my child stopped on surplus land because it's dark out and it's not lit. I think there are alternatives to this article to keep kids off the property when they're not supposed to be there. We could put video cameras on some of these properties. There's just other alternatives. So again, I'm voting against this article. Hope that you will too. And once again, no disrespect. Thank you.
Mr. Hayden?
I have fifteen grandchildren in Wilmington, so I have an interest in these kind of things. And having grown up in the city, I saw what, you know, kids' activity can be. I don't see any of that in Wilmington, to be honest with you. I see mostly pretty good kids, and I get around the town. So I'm sure I'm not disputing the police department's concerns about some of the places I would never see, that kids are doing bad things. But in my opinion, I think this is a little too restrictive. And if we have some specific things that we ought to do to clear up hotspots or things that we ought to do to clear up hotspots or other things, then I think we ought to do those first, and I wouldn't have any objection to considering something like this a year from now after we saw some of the programs that might be put in place to take care of whatever those issues are.
Yes, ma'am, in the middle?
Hi, I'm Becky Mason, I live on Shady Lane. I'd like to move this question.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Okay, there is a motion to end debate, and give the maker of the motion up to 10 minutes if they should so choose to use it. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor of ending debate on Article number 22 signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Mr. Smogly, you are the maker of the motion. Would you like to yield your time to the chief? Chief?
Thank you.
That is within the rules, ladies and gentlemen. The maker of the motion can defer their time to any voter. Chief?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, I think that, just to answer a couple of questions or highlight a couple of issues, the intent of the bylaw is to not cite the juvenile and not give them a record. It's, the option is to go towards the parents. You know, I think that if we had a conversation with the parents, and I understand, I use the word "intent," but quite frankly, being, you know, at town meeting many, many years, it's used quite often. It is not in the bylaw that we're going to restrict people from the cemetery. It is in the bylaw that gives us an alternative other than giving the juvenile a record. That's the purpose of that language that's in there, to give us another option, to not hold the juvenile specifically liable for fines, but for the parents. So I think with that, there's a lot of latitude. Conservation land, if somebody's walking through it, I don't believe that's part of this. This specifically relates to parks and crowns and things as such, so, you know, once again, I don't take personal affront to any of the comments. I understand the nature of the word "curfew." It's not a general curfew, it doesn't go through the entire town. People are still welcome to come and go as they please. It just protects some of those areas in town that the police department responds to on a regular basis. And quite frankly, with our resources, I can't have an officer down at the Justin O'Neill Memorial Scape Park, which gets destroyed on a regular basis down there at night without lights. It's just a tool that we're asking to help us to maintain those areas and keep them preserved for the good ladies and gentlemen of the town and the children to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready for vote? I'd ask the tellers, there's been a lot of discussion on this, I'd ask the tellers just to take their places. All those in favor of Article 22 is presented signify by rising at your place. All those opposed to Article 22 is presented signify by rising at your place. The voters as follows, 63 in the affirmative, 53 in the negative, the motion passes. So, chief, I had a question for you. You mentioned that there's no intention to restrict runners that are out on the track at 5:00 in the morning. If I get up in the morning, I normally run. If I don't feel like running, can I now say there's a bylaw and I don't have to? I'm good, okay.
And I would like to add that I would love to be here in 30 years, but I don't think I'll be able to.
On page 30, and the map for this is on page 37. To see if the town will vote to authorize a selectman to enter into an agreement, the terms of which shall be determined by the selectman to self-convey or otherwise dispose of all or part of the following described parcels, following a determination made by the town manager that the land is not needed for any municipal purpose, in accordance with Chapter 3, Section 16 of the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised and other applicable law. The parcels are located on Faneuil Drive, described in the assessors' records as Map 44, Parcels 166 and 167, or take any other action related there too. Is there a motion, Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Stewart, I would move to see if the town of Wilmington will vote to authorize a selectman to enter into an agreement, the terms of which shall be determined by the selectman to self-convey or otherwise dispose of...
Mr. Peterson, does your motion read as it's in the book?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it does.
I'll take that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation, approval, Planning Board recommendation, is approval, town managers, was there?
If it's surplus.
If it's surplus. Town managers declaration of surplus?
Yes.
It is surplus. Town assessors, fair market minimum value on this parcel. Mr. Moynihan?
The Board of Assessors has determined the fair market value to be $150,000.
$150,000. Mr. Peterson, are you good with $150,000 being included in your article?
Yes, I am, Mr. Moore.
Great, I'll accept that as the main motion. Discussion, Mr. Peterson?
Servicing parcel 169 be replaced because it's old, and there's also no sewer connected to parcel 169, or 168. The property is serviced by a cesspool. When the town of Wilmington installed sewer lines in this area, if you look at the map at the intersection of Harvard Avenue and Faneuil Drive, the sewer main, the sewer manhole cover was left at that intersection. There are other houses on Faneuil Drive. Parcel 171A, which is at the corner of Harvard and Faneuil, has frontage on both Harvard and Faneuil, and accesses sewer from Harvard Ave. Parcel 174 is located on Main Street, so it had no need for sewer. Parcel 170, which is located on Faneuil Drive, was able to access sewer from Main Street. The next parcel down was Mrs. Warner's parcel, and because it was the only house on that street that would have needed sewer and water, no services were provided to Faneuil Drive. So the purpose of the article, to bring water and sewer down Faneuil Drive in order and to allow for the reconstruction of the Warner parcel, it is beneficial to purchase the town-owned land and bring the services down for both parcels. The estimated cost to bring water and sewer down Faneuil Drive if required and to repave the street is approximately $70,000. So the purpose is to combine the two parcels, not to combine them, but to develop the two parcels simultaneously, so to minimize the cost of the water and sewer and paving on Faneuil Drive at the time of construction.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peterson. Further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Is this on? Oh. Can the vote, my name is Elaine Missstrata, I'm at 8 Fairview Ave, and can the vote on the curfew be challenged?
The only way the vote on the curfew could come up would be, would be a vote to reconsider that article by someone who voted in favor of the article itself. So you would have to reconsider the article, and then we would vote on the motion to reconsider. If that was favorable, we would then take up the vote on that article in its entirety again.
Only by someone who voted in the affirmative?
Yes, correct. You can only reconsider a vote if you voted on the prevailing side.
Oh, I wish I knew that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion on Article 33. We're ready for the vote? We'll try a voice vote. We're voting on Article number 33 to convey, give the right, the selectman the right to enter into an agreement, the amount being $150,000. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously. On page 28, to see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised by adding the following New Chapter 5 Public Regulation Section 35 fencing as follows. Fencing, Section 35, fencing constructed on residential or commercial zone property within the town of Wilmington shall comply with the following. One, comply with Massachusetts general laws and building codes. Two, all fences must be installed with finished side facing adjoining property. Three, fencing may be installed up to a property boundary line, but no portion of any holes excavated for the installation of fence posts shall be located on an abutting property, and no portion of a fence may overhang in abutting property without written permission from the abutting property owner. Four, all fencing will be of commercial manufacture and specifically designed for use as fencing, or if constructed by property owner or contractor, shall be constructed from materials likely to be serviceable for 20 or more years and of a design which is consistent with the use and character of both the property on which the fence is located and the abutting properties. Five, the color of fence construction materials and/or out-of-finish color is to be consistent with other onsite permanent structures which themselves are in conformance with zoning regulations. Six, wood fence posts for use with fencing greater than three feet in height shall be constructed of square posts of a minimum nominal dimension of four inches, or round posts with a minimum nominal diameter of five inches. Seven, safety or barricade-type temporary fencing such as is typically used at construction sites to limit unauthorized access or observation shall not be used as residential, at residential properties as perimeter fencing except during periods of excavation or construction, and is necessary to comply with other applicable local, state, or federal safety regulations. The residential restriction on the use of safety fencing does not apply to fencing installed around a swimming pool in conformance with other local and/or state safety regulations or take anything in reaction related there too. Is there a motion, Mr. Linganfelter?
I move to see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised by adding the following New Chapter 5 Public Regulation Section 35 fencing as follows.
And, Mr. Linganfelter, does your motion continue as it's in the booklet?
It does.
Great, I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation?
Disapproval.
Disapproval, discussion, Mr. Linganfelter?
Yes. The adjacent property in my house was purchased last spring, and last August, the neighbor started to build a fence, which in my estimation constituted a spite fence, and I made those observations available to the building inspector, and he was a little bit, somewhat unresponsive to my complaints that the fence was inappropriate for the character of the neighborhood and it also represented a public safety hazard. Later, the height of the fence was actually increased to greater than six feet, 96 feet of 190-foot plywood fence is actually six foot seven tall. And at the Joint Planning and Finance Committee meeting earlier this March, one of the Finance Committee members specifically asked the building inspector if a permit was required for a fence, and I believe the building inspector's answer was not if it was over six feet. So my, my observation on part of my article in support for it is that the plywood fence that was constructed, actually 96 feet of it is approximately six foot seven. And so I'm going to have to inquire of the building inspector, did he come down and inspect the height, and if he found that it was over six feet, did he issue a permit? And if he didn't issue a permit, why didn't he? That's one question. And then, on the other side of my property, the same owner owns both properties all around me, they erected out of scrap wood a framework which they erected blue polyethylene tarp. A lot of that fence is actually six foot, five foot tall. And if you actually, if you go to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts laws, I think it's Chapter 49, Section 21, spite fences, there's actually a citation in Massachusetts law for definition remedy of injured occupant. Section 21, a fence or other structure in the nature of a fence which unnecessarily exceeds six feet in height and is maliciously erected or maintained for the purpose of annoying the owners or occupants of the adjacent property shall be deemed a private nuisance. Any such owner or occupant injured in the comfort or enjoyment of his estate thereby may have action of tort for damages under Chapter 243. So actually, this looks to me like I actually have legal recourse prior to my spending thousands of dollars to go to court and then making the determination if I just take action against my adjacent property owner and/or the town for, I think, allowing something that common sense would tell anyone it was reasonable was inappropriate, and to get no response from the town either way, whether I was crazy or that it was okay. Was there a permit issued? Was there not a permit issued? The building inspector states that a permit is needed over six feet. Lots of the blue fence is actually six foot five, more than half of the plywood fence is six foot seven. And so it occurred to me that the town needs a fencing regulation if common sense doesn't prevail, and these kind of actions are allowed to occur. And so I just did on my own, I wrote up what I thought would be appropriate fencing regulations. I did approach Representative Misselli and asked him what he thought, and he said, sure, I think you can need it too. And he said, go ahead and use my name, and that I support your article. I think actually I got a comment at the Joint Planning and Finance Committee meeting from one of the Finance Committee members, that they said I've taken a shot at it unguided, that I did a pretty good job. It was my first shot at it, and I've never put up an article for consideration before. In reviewing this year's book, The Town Report, I noticed that one of the committees is listed as a bylaw review committee, and the question occurred to me is that, that's, I've looked at several year-passed books and the bylaw review committee, and I don't remember ever hearing the bylaw review committee make any comments on the bylaw. And if I was to come before the town with a proposed bylaw for fences, I don't know that there's any procedure or process put forward that I could bring a rough draft to and work with somebody to come up with something that would, that would work out appropriately. I'm not a construction person, but I'm an environmental consultant, have my own business, and I wrote these laws to be general enough that I don't believe anybody that builds a fence that's appropriate, I don't think this will affect them at all. Anyone that builds a common sense fence for the purpose of what a fence is built for, my bylaw is written, should not affect them. I think I have a good case that this is a spite fence. After this plywood fence was constructed, the neighbor went ahead and they constructed several hundred feet of the nice white vinyl fence, but instead of having a nice vinyl fence dividing the properties, I have a plywood fence that's bowing and warping in various directions, it's leaning, there are exposed nails. I have an eight-year-old son that wants to play in his yard. If he's going to get caught in one of those nails, you know, that could be a problem. I've already said to the building inspector in writing twice that I believe that the fence is a safety hazard, a public safety hazard, so I'm on record with that position. I have videotapes of this thing rocking back and forth in the wind, and I'm just putting on notice that if this fence does come down, the town's already noticed it, someone at least has notified them of it being a public safety hazard. So in order to address what I see as a problem and shortcoming, and prior to my going to court against either the property owner or the town, and saving myself thousands of dollars, I think to propose this regulation is going to be fair to everybody else moving forward. As pointed out, I believe the fence that's there is already exceeds the six foot, so it should come down, and if this is in place, you can't replace it, because there would be a bylaw prohibiting the construction of what's there now. And if the neighbor wants to put up a fence for privacy, he should have put up an appropriate fence. Happy to entertain any questions. I actually have a flyer with some selected pictures that I distributed to kind of represent the people, that I don't think that that's an appropriate fence. I have 300 feet of blue polyethylene tarp around my property, I have 190 feet of plywood fence that's warping and bowing, and then it's also, well, there's a different issue with junk and everything else that's in the back that I've already talked to the building inspector about, and he said, pretty much told me to just get used to it, but I think that's another tale for another day. But, so I'll put forward the questions, I guess.
Further discussion? Mr. Spalding, on the, I want to keep discussion on the article, I could, the dispute on the fence, I let Mr. Linganfelter, since he's a petitioner, go into that a bit to explain why he was presenting this article. I don't want to get into Mr. Linganfelter's fence dispute. I want to talk about the article. Mr. Spalding? Mr. Spalding.
Okay. As the building inspector for the Town of Wilmington, I can only enforce the zoning laws and the building code. The building code says fences over six feet shall be permitted, and it doesn't say anything about aesthetics. And as far as it being a structure that you believe is unsafe, I would have to take exception to that. I think we had some of the highest wind loads on record in the last six or seven months, and that fence hasn't moved. So the shape of the fence is...
Mr. Spalding, we're not here to dispute Mr. Lingonfelder's fence. We're here to talk about the bylaw. You and Mr. Lingonfelder can handle his fence dispute separately. That's not what this body's here for.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion for a new bylaw. Mr. Sagal.
I'm waiting, Jim.
I'm sorry, Mr. Marchesi, if you were waiting. I apologize. I don't see, I saw Mr. Sagal in front, I apologize. I will get to you next, okay? Mr. Sagal.
I just had a couple of questions on the bylaw. Our current town bylaws, I spent a number of years on the zoning board, and I was not familiar with the six-foot rule, I think that's Massachusetts Building Code. But our own bylaw says, mentions perimeter fences up to eight feet high. So being in excess of six feet is not necessarily against our bylaws, to my understanding. The other thing is, as I read this article as written, it's Item 6 indicates that wood fence posts used for fencing greater than three feet high shall be constructed of square posts of a minimum nominal dimension of four inches. But I think my own fence that I bought from Home Depot is basically built with four-by-fours as the uprights, and a modern four-by-four is three and a half inches by three and a half inches. So is that considered nominal four inches if it's a three and a half inch by three and a half inch board?
Yes, that's why it says nominal diameter. That also means whether it's three and three-eighths, or three and five-eighths, or whatever the mill cut it, that's what is nominal diameter. They still call it a four-by-four.
Thank you. Those are the two questions I had. Like I said, provisions for an eight-foot fence are in our own bylaws, and I thought that that was... Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Marchesi.
Yes, I rise in opposition to this Warren article. We already have a town bylaw that specifies the type of fence that can be put up. We have Mass General Law, we have building codes that specify the size of the fence and so forth, and structure being sound. I believe this is just a bit too restrictive in terms of the type of materials that people are going to be using on their houses, in terms of what the use of fencing material, in terms of what color they use in the fence. I think this just goes a little bit far and beyond in terms of what we want in overregulation in the town. So I rise in opposition. Thank you.
Further discussion? We're ready for Mr. Newhouse?
Just very quickly, Mr. Moderator, one of the points that I would have about this article is that I can appreciate the reason for which an article like this might be put forward. But one of the reasons why the statute that was previously referenced exists is for private property owners to deal with questions of what's appropriate and not appropriate without dragging the town into those kinds of determinations to be made. So that's why I'll be voting against it.
Mr. Bartner?
Good fences make good neighbors. This, I've driven by Mr. Lincolnfelder's home, and I've seen this fence. I mean, yes, George Lincolnfelder has everything covered in the law here. On construction sites, temporary fencing, they're permissible. This is a fence to last 20 years. It's horrendous. It shouldn't be allowed to be built as such. Lot of us spend serious money. Fencing is not cheap. It's expensive. Do approximately 1,000 foot, 200 foot of fencing is well over, just to buy materials $1,000. What George is looking for here, I believe, with this article, is not to create another law, but just to supplement the existing law. The footage, very similar to the chief of police with his curfew law and his punch-up law. I mean, a lot of us weren't in favor with it, but it just adds another law. George is adding another law, but it's tasteful. Is it necessary? Yes, no, and maybe. I say allow this article to go through and approve it. It is not going to hurt anyone. It just clarifies it a little more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone who hasn't spoken, Mr. Shampoo?
I understand the spirit or the intent of this law. I think the law is coming out of a personal circumstance that can be potentially handled outside of the Town of Wilmington having a new bylaw in place. The slippery slope that I feel like this law would create would be what's next. I don't believe that the Town of Wilmington, or really any legislative body, should be in the business of legislating good taste. As much as I would hate for my neighbor to paint his house purple with red stripes and polka dots, frankly, that's really none of my business. I would hate it because it would make my neighborhood look ridiculous, and it might even reduce my property value. But at the end of the day, that's his personal taste and not mine. I feel like, I understand, and if you look at the pictures, we can all probably make a determination on our own as to whether or not we think it's in good taste or bad taste. But frankly, I don't believe that the Town of Wilmington should be in the business of determining what is or is not in good taste. I urge you to vote against this bylaw.
Mr. Kira?
First of all, Mr., I'm sorry. First of all, Mr. Moderator, I've driven by the property, and I would not want that fence by my house. And so I acknowledge that right away. I guess, you know, beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. But, that said, similar to what Sluckman Shampoo just said, if we look at Number 5 in Section 35, it says, "The color of fence construction materials and/or outer finish color is to be consistent with other onsite permanent structures which themselves are in conformance with zoning regulations." I'm not sure how we're going to be the color police. Who is going to determine what's consistent and what isn't? I have the good fortune to rely on my wife so that my tie matches my suit. But I'm not sure that we're going to be able to determine for somebody that blue can't go with white, or, you know, green can't go with orange. So that's going to present a problem. I do agree with the building inspector on this particular issue, that we have laws to take care of that. That said, if it's a spite fence, and if there's a problem, we have laws to take care of that as well. And just as Mr. Newhouse mentioned, you know, despite the threat to give the town notice, this is really a civil issue, and should be handled, you know, between neighbors. And it's unfortunate, because if somebody asks me at the end of the day what the most difficult issues are to deal with, they are the issues that don't pertain to the town. When someone comes to the town and says they're having a problem typically with a neighbor, and the town doesn't have jurisdiction over those issues, and that's what this is. And I sympathize with Mr. Lingonfelder, but I don't believe that this particular fence bylaw is going to help out the situation.
Mrs. Lennan.
I looked at, someone else gave it to me, not Mr. Lingonfelder, pictures, and I have to totally agree with Mr. Kira. And I tip my hat to you, sir. And it is a spite fence. He didn't say it is. But if you get a look at this, and I wish everyone here had a copy of it, I would not want this next to my house, and I don't think anyone in here would. I have to agree with Mr. Kira because I'm not, that familiar with this bylaw, but this is a spite fence. And I think there's some, might be some recourse for you.
There is, but it's going to cost like $6,000, $10,000.
Further discussion? Anyone who hasn't spoken yet?
Thank you.
Mr. Marchesi?
Yes, I agree with Sluckman Newhouse and Sluckman Shampoo, and also Mr. Kira, in opposition to this. The question goes to the fact that you start driving through town, and you see other things that you don't approve of because it's unsightly, or because something that you don't like, does this now send us down that slippery slope where we get to come to town meeting, and we get to set up bylaws because it's something that we don't like? Not whether it's in compliance or not with the law, it's because it's of our own personal taste. And I think that if this goes further, that we are definitely going down that slippery slope, and that other people in this town who may not have the most sightly properties are going to be brought to town meeting, and people are going to have bylaws against them in terms of what's on their property, or what their house looks like. So we do have building laws, we have Mass General Law, and to bring personal attacks into this discussion, I think is incorrect, and that I think we should stay focused on what the Warren article says. And again, I'm in opposition. Thank you.
Mr. Sagal. And just for clarification, debate has stuck to exactly that. That was my point earlier, Ms. Marchesi. Mr. Sagal.
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to ask Town Council, if we were to pass a bylaw such as this, would it apply to previously existing structures? Or would it automatically, would they be grandfathered anyway?
Mr. Moderator, the way it's written, I'd have to tell you that it could apply retroactively. There's a presumption in Massachusetts that changes of some type apply retroactively. I can't definitively say it wouldn't.
Further discussion? Anyone else? Mr. Lingonfelder?
Yes, I'd like to make a few more comments, I guess, to respond to one of the things that Mr. Kira said. The language in this was intentionally vague, specifically when we refer to the vagueness that I chose for verbiage and the color, I don't remember, I don't see it exactly here, consistent with other structures. I was trying to not be specifically telling someone what color fence they couldn't have, just that you just don't want to have something sticking out like a sore thumb, so that if someone had a blue house, they could have a blue fence. And that's why the language was intentionally vague. And this article was generated out of the problem that was identified, but I didn't come down here as a personal attack to put this article. My intention is, moving forward, if the town has an article like this, this is going to alleviate someone else from having a problem. And then after having written this and having listened to the discussion at the Joint Planning and Finance Committee meeting, one of the comments that the building inspector did make was that he said, maybe someone that asked the question might remember and could quote and confirm that, that a fence over six foot tall needs a permit. And I can tell you that 96 feet of that 190-foot plywood fence is about six foot seven tall, and there's a lot of elements of the other blue fence with the frame, it's not really a fence, it's just a wood frame with blue tarp attached to it. That's six foot five. And so if in fact the town does need a permit over six feet, that was part of my argument. And that was, I'm pretty sure it was a quote, and it's probably on tape at the Joint Planning and Finance Committee meeting. He said a fence over six foot tall needed a permit. And a lot of that fence out there right now is over six feet tall. And if that's the case, I wanted to know where the permit was. I'll come down and look for it next week, I guess. And I decide there actually is a regulation on spite fences, and it just might behoove the town to have a regulation, because if in fact there is involvement from the building inspector approving a fence that is a spite fence, that the town may be involved somehow in any kind of litigation.
Let's stick to the Warren article, okay?
Well, I'm trying to, you know, it's kind of fuzzy.
You've made your point that it is your fence which is the reason that it is before us. I think we're all clear on that. Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. We're on Article number 29. Those in favor of Article 29 is presented signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion is defeated. We're on Article number 25. On page 26, "To see if the town will vote to petition the General Court and to request its representatives in the General Court to seek enactment of special legislation for the town on the form set forth below. It being the intent of the town to authorize the General Court to make constructive changes to the text hereof, subject to the approval of the Town's Board of Selectmen, to accomplish the public policy purposes hereof, or take any other action related thereto. An act exempting the Town of Wilmington from liability. Notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, the Town of Wilmington shall not be found or held liable with respect to the solid waste landfill and site located in the town, which is known as the Maple Meadows landfill. Pursuant to Chapter 21E of the general laws, or any regulations, guidelines, orders, or approvals promulgated thereunder; B, pursuant to Chapter 111, Sections 150A or 158, one-half of the general laws, or any regulations, guidelines, orders, or approvals promulgated thereunder; C, pursuant to Chapter 21C of the general laws, or any regulations, guidelines, orders, or approvals promulgated thereunder; or D, pursuant to the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, Chapter 310 of the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, Section 40, or any guidelines, orders, or approvals promulgated thereunder." Is there a motion? Mr. Shampoo?
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I move that the home rule petition set forth below be presented to the General Court, that the Town's representatives to the General Court be hereby requested to seek enactment of special legislation for the town, it being the intent that the General Court be authorized to make constructive changes to the text hereof, subject to the approval of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, to accomplish the public policy purposes as set forth below. An act exempting the Town of Wilmington from liability. Section 1.
And Mr. Shampoo, does yours continue as is in the booklet?
It does.
Great, I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation? Is approval, discussion? Mr. Newhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Throughout the past several years, the town and individuals within the town have not unanimously agreed on every aspect of how the town should tackle the capping enclosure of the Maple Meadow landfill. However, two years ago at town meeting, this body unanimously supported the measure that comes before you again today. Historically, the town had wrestled at various times, both through the legal process and through the political process with DEP, to try and exert our influence in the process such that the result of the capping enclosure activities at the landfill are acceptable to the town. Over the course of the past three years or so, the town has cultivated a much more positive relationship with the Department of Environmental Protection, and that positive relationship is reaping some benefits. Truly, I think that the town now has a seat at the table in terms of the capping enclosure of that landfill, notwithstanding the fact that in a legal sense, DEP is completely in charge of that process. With all of that said, after this measure passed town meeting a couple of years ago, it made its way through the legislative process, met a couple of milestones that I think we could characterize as successful, got a positive recommendation out of a joint committee of the House and Senate, and just given the legislative process, it just didn't come to fruition. Our legislative delegation has been unanimous in the support of this measure, again, as town meeting was two years ago. So without much further, I'd just ask that the residents support this article and enable our legislative delegation to continue the work that it's done for the better part of the last two years. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm Russ Worth from Grove Avenue, and I'm just new to Wilmington and wondering where this is. I have the map open. Can someone direct me to where this location is?
It's, if you took Route 38 south toward Woburn, it's on the right-hand side of
Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Marchesi?
Just a simple question. Since this article was brought up two years ago and was approved by town meeting, what is essentially different from two years ago till today, and why does it need to be brought? Again, I'm in favor of this, but I'm just curious what the difference is and why we need to vote for it again. That's all.
There are no differences to the article before you or the proposed legislation. Senator Tyra had been the one that sponsored originally that measure, and asked that we bring it again because it had become, quote-unquote, stale.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the vote? We're on Article 25. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Article 19, "To see if the town will vote to accept Massachusetts general law, Chapter 64L, Section 2A, to impose a local meals tax or do anything, or take any other action related thereto." related thereto." Mr. Newhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town accept Mass General laws, Chapter 64L, Section 2A, to impose a local meals tax.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded by Finance Committee recommendation. Approval, discussion. Mr. Newhouse.
Thank you again, Mr. Moderator. I stand before you this afternoon as a member of the Board of Selectmen that unanimously voted to put this before you for determination by this body. Members of the Board of Selectmen don't necessarily agree on whether or not this measure makes sense, particularly at this time, but it has been unanimous in seeing to it that we put it before you. Just by way of a quick explanation, in recent years, I want to say about three years ago, the legislature passed a law which enables cities and towns to adopt an optional local meals tax. And that optional tax would be at a percentage of .75 percent. And that tax would apply to any number of retail establishments, ranging from Dunkin' Donuts to whatever restaurant might be down the street. It's with, well, I'm not one of those people who claims to always have a finger on the pulse of the community. But one thing is for sure, I certainly understand that given the economic environment in general and the difficulty that people are having in paying bills, I certainly understand the significance of the word "tax," and it's not something that I take lightly or with any degree of arrogance or presumption. But I do think that when you look at this particular optional tax, there's a lot to be said for a town voting to impose it not only on itself as residents, but on those folks who visit the town either on a daily basis or a periodic basis. Some of the arguments that I've heard against this particular measure are that, for example, a tax is a tax is a tax. And certainly, generally speaking, I'm not somebody that is for taxes. But I do believe that there are differences between various taxes. An optional tax such as this one that would effectively raise money, something to the order of a few hundred thousand dollars per year, would largely be subsidized by folks who don't necessarily reside in town. Right now, the number of folks who visit Wilmington on a regular basis, on a daily basis, roughly equal to the number of residents who live in this town. So, when you talk about driving through Dunkin' Donuts and ordering a medium black that costs a dollar ninety-eight cents to pay this additional tax, which would make the cost of that same coffee a dollar ninety-nine cents, that tax in large part is going to be subsidized from folks from another town. I also hear arguments against this tax based on the fact that our budget is balanced and that fortunately, we don't charge any user fees for things like trash and athletics and music and theater and the like. And I agree with that. One of the last things that I would want to do to balance the budget is to require people to pay fees for those various items and those various services. But, you know, the town of Wilmington, I think, has been lucky not only in having residents who are very judicious in terms of how we expend our dollars, I think the town has also been creative in terms of how we can generate revenue. And again, in a situation like this, we have 15 out of 22 neighboring towns having imposed this tax. We are the ones who actually pay that tax in other towns. So, if we drive to 15 of 22 neighboring towns that has adopted this tax, every time we drive through Dunkin' Donuts or go to a restaurant, we're actually subsidizing their residential tax base and, you know, possibly helping them to avoid such user fees that we've been lucky enough to avoid. The other argument that I hear against a measure like this is the fact that it might chill business for our local establishments. And frankly, for quite a while, that was the biggest reason why I was concerned about bringing a measure like this before town meeting. The last thing that I want to do is to chill the business that we have in town, particularly small business. But with that said, over the last couple of years, as I thought about the different places that my family, we might go out to eat, or, you know, drive through a drive-through retail establishment, or to grab a cup of coffee, it really has occurred to me that I don't have the first clue about whether or not those towns impose a local meals tax. And it's probably because of the fact that if you go out and spend $50 on a meal, it ends up being 37 and a half cents on the bill. So, for that reason, I suspect that many folks, like myself, when we decide whether or not to drive through a drive-through or to go visit a restaurant that we might like, to the extent people are like me, I don't even know whether or not they have that tax. But I know at the end of the day, towns like Burlington bring in about $900,000 a year. And that's a lot of books, it's a lot of playing fields, and it's certainly nothing to sneeze at in terms of revenue. So, with all of that said, I expect that this is a measure that folks will have a strong opinion about, and I'm certainly eager to hear what that opinion is. I just respectfully ask that you consider the practical side of what this can do for the town, and the practical side of how it may or may not affect your personal life. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Shampoo.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I have the unenviable task of opposing my good friend and colleague, Mr. Newhouse, on this measure. And because of his articulate way of making an argument off the cuff, I'm going to go off the paper. If you'll please allow me to repeat myself and some of the comments that Mr. Newhouse made. In 2009, Massachusetts raised the statewide sales tax on restaurant meals from 5 percent to the current 6 and 1/4 percent, and gave the cities and towns of the Commonwealth the option of imposing an additional local meals tax of .75, 3/4 of 1 percent. This additional local tax revenue to be directed to the Town's General Fund. You, or we, the residents of Wilmington, have the opportunity to decide if we, as a community, wish to institute this optional tax. Before I share my personal view, I guess I already have, but as I share my personal view about this consumer tax, let me stipulate a couple of important topics, or a couple of important points. As a member of your Board of Selectmen, I voted together with Mr. Newhouse and my fellow members of the board unanimously to approve Article 19 for the town meeting warrant and to give us, you, the residents, the option to accept or decline this measure. I'm glad I voted in this way, and I would do it again. You deserve the opportunity to have your voice heard. If implemented, Wilmington, secondly, if implemented, Wilmington would see somewhere in the vicinity of $300,000 of new revenue in the next fiscal year. And thirdly, on a $100 dining bill, the additional local option tax would amount to an additional 75 cents on the bill. I acknowledge the amount to be small. With all of those items accepted, let me express why I hope that you will join me in not supporting this optional new tax and stand in opposition to it today. Our state legislature gave the cities and towns the option of taxing its citizens deeper than we are taxed already, because they realized that many towns were struggling to fund basic services under reductions in local aid funds from the state. It is my strong feeling that our governor and other state government officials need to look deeper at their spending and not give up on doing the hard work of finding wasteful spending to cut. When I am convinced that the state has cut every piece of unnecessary spending and still needs to cut local aid, I'll give some second thought to this local option tax. Until that time, I think we should take a stand and send a message to the state legislature that Wilmington is not okay with digging deeper into people's pockets. My objection to this optional tax is based on principle. Those that argue in favor of this measure make a convincing and articulate argument, as you just heard. That argument includes the items I stipulated above, and the suggestion that much of the weekday and meals spending in town is being done by non-residents who commute here for work. They argue that the pain of three additional quarters on a $100 meal is negligible, and that the reward is worth the cost. That is where we part ways on this issue. If the cost was one penny more, my opinion would be the same on this. Moreover, allow me to express my sincere gratitude and thanks to Town Manager Michael Kyra and his staff of professionals who have, through diligent and consistent hard work, placed Wilmington in a strong, solid, economically stable position. Because of our fiscal stability and strength, I am even more opposed to this optional new tax. We just don't need it now. Before implementing new taxes, please, let's not mince words about this. This is a new tax. Government should assure people it serves that it is already spending every penny from the existing taxes collected in the most efficient and waste-free manner as possible. I'm not convinced by the state. Does anyone think that this tax will ever go away or be reduced? When does it stop? What's next, a new local tax on gasoline or home heating fuel? I'd like us all to set a precedent of government not taking more than it needs and spending more than it has. And please, let's join together and send a message to our state legislators that Wilmington's not okay with more taxes. Thank you.
Mr. Markcazy.
I agree with Selectman Newhouse in the fact that a tax is a tax. I stand in opposition to this in generally because, granted, I understand that the amount on $100 bills only is 75 cents, but you talk about numbers in terms of raising revenue, 100, 200, 300,000 dollars, but there's yet no discussion on that whatever we raise will be an offset in the tax levy of the town of Wilmington. No, there isn't. It's just additional revenues to the town. And yes, as you stated earlier, yes, we do have a balanced budget, which we approved today at town meeting overwhelmingly. The town has sufficient funds, we've raised the monies through the tax levy to pay our bills and make sure that we do have a balanced budget. If there was somewhere in this, you know, in this article that whatever money was raised through this would offset the tax levy, and then maybe this would be amenable to the citizens of Wilmington, but we don't have a shortage. We're not looking for money. The schools are well-funded. It's not as if we're in a dire situation and Wilmington has no money and we're scratching for funds. That's not the case in the town of Wilmington. And in terms of big government and all of that, and it's, I think, people in Massachusetts, especially in this economy, I think we're a little bit fed up at this point where government keeps asking for more and more and more. You've come today to town meeting asking us to support the town budget, and we did so overwhelmingly. And to go beyond that, I think, is a little bit overreaching. And so, I do oppose this, and it's true, a tax is a tax no matter which way you look at it. Thank you.
Mr. Sagal.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I too rise in opposition to this. There aren't many taxes that I endorse, and there aren't many new taxes. No, I won't even put reservation on it. There are no new taxes that I endorse. And I'm old enough to remember that the taxes I pay now are higher than the taxes I used to pay, because once you start it, it, once the gate is open, then the gate goes in. Once the camel's nose is under the tent, then the camel's in the tent. And once we start this, we, you know, everyone talks about the slippery slope. Well, this is the slippery slope. We're already sliding down it. We don't need to increase our speed with another 3/4 on a $100 bill. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Kyra, then Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The arguments are very good on both sides, there's no question about that. But the fact is, I can't help but think we're somewhat shooting ourselves in the foot on this if we deny ourselves the opportunity to get the same money that we, as consumers, are giving to everybody else. So, if you've been to a restaurant or a Dunkin' Donuts in other communities, such as Andover, Burlington, North Reading, Reading, Woburn, five communities that abut the town of Wilmington, are communities that abut the towns that abut the town of Wilmington, like Bedford, and Chelmsford, and Drakeet, and Lawrence, and Lexington, and Lowell, and Linfield, and Peabody, and Stoneham, and Wakefield, and Winchester. Or if you go on Route 1, or if you go to Boston, or Worcester, or any other area, for the most part, you're paying their communities with your dollars, and you're not allowing those folks to give us the money that we could use for a good purpose. And part of that purpose is to prevent us from asking for Proposition 2.5 overrides. We've never had a 2.5 operating override in this community, because part of what I'm directed to do by the Board of Selectmen is to be conservative with the way we spend our money, and to try to find other sources of funds that are not onerous, that are not regressive on the town. And that's what this type of source of fund would be. We import more people in this community than we have adults in this community, every day when they come to work. They're the folks whose pennies and nickels and dimes are paying meals tax that would come to the town of Wilmington's coffers. This was passed in 2009. I know that there are probably 130 or so odd communities, many of the smaller communities that don't have restaurants, if you go out to places like Blandford, and Otis, and Peru, and all those other names that remind us of Red Sox players, like Fisk and things like that, yeah, you're not going to find anything out there. But any place that has restaurants, in the town of Wilmington, when we did the original projection and we got that projection from the Department of Revenue, they're the only ones that could really give it to us, because they know how much local meals tax money comes in. In 2009, they said we would accumulate at least $300,000 a year from this, from this source. That was before Chili's, and Golden Ginger, and an extra Dunkin' Donuts here and there, and a few other places that have come in since that time. I don't think, as Mr. Newhouse says, anybody determines which restaurant they're going to go to based upon whether or not there's the local excise on the meals tax. Now, I could be wrong, but I'm not sure if you do that, and even after you've been, whether you realize the tax was imposed or not. So, for that penny or two that comes in each time someone buys a cup of coffee from Dunkin' Donuts, three cents if you buy it from Starbucks, that's coming to the town of Wilmington, and those pennies add up. Those pennies add up to hundreds of thousands of dollars that I don't think hurts the pocketbook in this particular case. What hurts the pocketbook is us giving money to other communities and not being willing to accept it back from those people. The Department of Revenue said that by the end of 2010, in December of 2010, $37.5 million was raised from this source, and all of those other communities got to use it. I think we owe it to ourselves to get to save it, just the way we've been doing with other money, so that we're ready when that rainy day comes, so that we can pay down on any future debt for important facility improvement programs, and so that we can continue to not have to dip into your pockets and ask you not to pay two cents more on a $5 bill at a restaurant, but ask you not to have to pay the kinds of fees that we're seeing in other communities to enable a kid to play sports or be involved in an extracurricular opportunity or to park their car. So, I think this makes sense. This is, I'm pretty conservative in this town, and you know that. This one makes sense.
Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was debating whether or not I wanted to really speak on it, but the entire membership, including myself, I believe, let the people vote. I've chose to bring this out, I've chose to participate in letting the article go on town meeting floor, to let you people to make the ultimate decision. And if we were in dire straits, I would have no issue saying we would need to support this. We didn't lay off any teachers, no firefighters, and you talk about user fees, we don't have any user fees whatsoever. Other communities that do abut the town had layoffs, implement user fees, so therefore they're looking at alternative sources of income. And let's take a look at today, for example, the town moderator stated a couple of times, you know, the pizzas here, in case you, people want to buy a little lunch. And I want to touch upon that very little, and never, ever, in all my life, have discussed this. It's the local flavor in this community. You have great restaurants like Rocco's, Pizza Mia, AJ's, that donate pizzas, for example, to the town meeting. For example, Strings Attach benefit from it. Other organizations benefit from it. And I never brought this up for years, but the bottom line is, more local restaurants in this community donate to our cars than the chains. I'll give you some examples. I'm not looking for pat on the back, like the Pumpkin Fest at the Woburn Street School. My kids are long gone out of there, and I've done it for 10 years. But local restaurants like Rocco's, Pizza Mia, Wilmington House donate foods, and I also donate, but because of the connections I have in the food industry, I get Pepsi-Cola to donate 600 cans of soda, Panadossi to donate hot dog rolls, Lucci Supermarkets to donate hot dogs. We generated tens of thousands of dollars for a school like that. But it's not Mike McCoy, it's a collective. But it's not Mike McCoy, it's a collective with the community here. Wilmington Recreation Department, the list goes on and on and on. Senior citizens looking for gift certificates. I don't see a lot of the nationals in this town donate like we do, but they do. And it's all the locals. I live in this community, Rockwell Deep, Chuckie lives in this community, you know, we have a vested interest in this. And once again, this ain't going to break the bank if you people decide to vote for it, but a tax is a tax is a tax. You know, and I just, and I understand both sides of the argument, but let's talk about the abundance of having a surplus of folks in a day relative to employment when we have industry. Twenty years ago, Textron was AFCO Defense System, forty-five hundred people worked at that plant, people parked up and down Route one-twenty-nine or Route thirty-eight. They're down to about twelve-hundred as of a year ago. Since you had a layoff, just recently, two months ago, a hundred and fifty folks. Verizon, we want to talk about supplementing incomes. Companies today, Textron, Verizon, Analog Devices, help subsidize their lunch program because they want to keep their employees at the work, on the site. They don't want to see the employees going off the site. Some do, some don't. I just give you that example, so I just try to talk about that. And once again, when you see the local flavor, it's all the locals. When you want to talk about having choice to eat in this community, all you got to do is bring back Jack in the Box. You will have every single chain back here in the town of Wilmington, so you can patronize these restaurants here. But I understand the arguments of both sides. I just bring that up without dwelling on it and without patting any of us on the back, but the locals in this community, local heroes, for example, the Vietnam Moving Wall, a lot of local restaurants donated to that. And once again, it was all the locals again. So I just want to let people know that, that the locals really take concern in this community. We donate to cause time and time again. And once again, if the town meeting decides to vote for this, I don't have an issue with it. It's not going to break my back or anyone's back. But a tax is a tax, and just think of all the locals in this community that help subsidize everything that goes on in this community, far more than the chains, and the chains benefit far more than we do. I just want to bring that to the residents of this town. Thank you.
Mrs. Ledhan.
I'd like to thank all the restaurants in town for their gratuities. However, I rose to ask you to vote for this article. I believe that I had done. If you had this passed for ten dollars, you'd have seven cents. Now, someone said while I was gone, it's a hundred. If you had a meal that cost a hundred dollars with your whole family, the tax, and correct me if I'm wrong, would be seventy-five cents. And we need this. And we're sounding like tax, 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 tax. We need this right now. We're in a fiscal tight situation, and I rose to ask, please, vote for this. I don't believe there's anyone in this room, or very few people in Wilmington, that can't afford to support this community with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
For Plymouth Avenue, and I acknowledge what everybody says, it seems like a small amount. I also acknowledge that a tax is a tax. I also believe I was pretty much taught everything by my parents right about when I was seven. And Mr. Kyra, I agree with you, you're very conservative, and I appreciate everything you've done, but when a kid is hit, we teach our kids not to hit back, to go and tell somebody who can do something about it. And I think Mr. Shumpel said that very eloquently. We need to make a stand. It's a small amount, but it means a lot. And if we continue to allow these little infractions, it's just not going to stop. And I think it's just that common sense. Thank you.
Mr. Sagal.
Thank you. Actually, Mr. Kyra stepped on something. I stood up when he was speaking because he was listing off the local towns that have this tax, and I was actually going to ask him for that list, so I would know when not to eat. But one thing that comes to mind, if a lot of the neighbors are doing something, and something that I learned from my parents too, and I think that my mother used to phrase it, well, if your friends are jumping off a bridge, would you do it also? I don't think we can point to mistakes that other towns have made or indiscretions that other towns have made or choices that other towns have made that don't represent our values as justification for us doing it. Oh, my friend has a, you know, has a cellphone, so why can't I have a cellphone? And I need to have this video game, and I need to have that video game. We deal with our kids all the time. Well, unfortunately, we don't need new taxes. Maybe at some point in the future we do, but at this moment, we don't need new taxes. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Smaglia.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to clarify a couple of things. This money comes to us, it stays in Wilmington here. We've all agreed that we've conservatively spent for many, many years. So we're not going to send a message to Boston or to Massachusetts that we're not going to give them this money, they're not going to get it. And Mr. Kyra and Mr. Newhouse spoke on it, and I'd just like to explain what they were talking about. There's over eighteen thousand people that come into Wilmington every day to work, over eighteen thousand. And that was a couple of years ago, a little over a year ago, when I got those numbers. So that's a lot of people that come into Wilmington every day to have lunch, to go to Dunkin' Donuts and do their thing with their coffee and donuts. So just, again, they touched on it, but I just want to make sure people understand that there's over eighteen thousand people that come into Wilmington every day to work. Thank you.
Mr. Burnham.
A short comment to say that, addressing, I guess, Mr. Kyra's comments, just because other towns do it doesn't necessarily mean we should do the same thing. And in fact, it's not a zero-sum game. Just because they're charging higher taxes, if we charge higher taxes, it's not going to mean less money that Wilmington residents pay, it's going to be even more. If you eat half the time in this town, half the time in other towns, now you're paying twice as much. Your financial address at the beginning of the Finance Committee, you stated that we're one of, I believe, the best affordable suburbs in Massachusetts. I'd like to stay one of the best affordable suburbs in Massachusetts. And this, although it's small in terms of money, makes us and distinguishes the town of Wilmington as one of the best affordable suburbs, and I'd like to stay that way.
Chief Nally.
Like all of you, I don't like taxes either. Again, my first statement was the best. Like all residents, I don't like taxes either. But I've looked at this one and looked at it as, if anything, the least painful. One of the things, I looked at a list of, which was provided to us by the town manager some time ago, was when the Finance Committee was discussing this, and I looked at the towns that have already accepted it. And I said, gee whiz, I'm already paying it a good part of the time. So why don't I pay it in my own town and get the benefit of it, as opposed to just giving it to Burlington, North Reading, and Woburn and a few others? Tewksbury had not adopted it, and I believe they might have it in their town meeting for this year. More than likely, they will adopt it. So if you want to get away from the tax, you're going to have to go a ways. You might want to go to Carlisle to eat, you might want to go to Drakeet or Linfield. But that's a long ride for the seventy-five cents that you might save on your hundred-dollar bill if you stick in town. So it's, as I say, it's not a big expense, it's not going to hurt you, and it's going to give some money to the town to use. Finance Committee is always looking for some money. But we've got a town right now that's, we all are very proud of, that we all feel that's well-run. We've got a manager that says this is something that can help us. And although some people said, we don't have a problem yet, and if there's a problem, then go for the extra money. But why wait when we can do it now and perhaps put off any future problems for at least a few years? We're not going to waste the money, we never have, we've always proved that we spend wisely. And I think you should trust the town to continue that. And certainly, whether the manager retires or not, which most of us hope he won't, but the Finance Committee will still be here and will be watching those pennies. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move the question.
Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded. We're voting to end debate and give the maker of the motion, which was Mr. Newhouse, up to ten minutes if he should so choose. Those in favor of ending debate on Article nineteen signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Voted, Mr. Newhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It will be brief, but I think I'm remiss if I don't take a couple of moments to try and make a point. First of all, I do understand the significance of a message vote. I understand that sometimes people feel compelled to take a stand on an issue that really doesn't come down to dollars.